A prayer for that one thing. God, all powerful over the living, we will always and everywhere to give you thanks. All things of your making, all times and seasons obey your laws. You chose to create us in your own image, sending us over the whole world with all of this wonder. You have made us the stewards of creation. I praise you day by day for the marvels of your wisdom and power. Whatever our deliberations and discussions this evening, that we may follow the counsel and wisdom of your spirit, and all that we seek to accomplish for your residents and for the city of South Bend. Amen.
What's the pointy? Can you read them all for me? Mr. Scott, Charles Lewis, or Henry Davis? Uh, Mr. Chek?
I'm Tom.
Dr. Furley here. Dr. Varne, President. Vice President David.
President.
Council Member White.
Present.
Mr. Furley.
President Peter.
President Mr. Roy.
Uh, eight reporting present. May I have the report from the Senate Committee on Minutes? To the common council of the city of South Bend, the Senate Committee has inspected the amendments on the September 9th, 2013 meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved, signed by Peter David Varne. Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition? Thank you. Uh, we have a squirm there under special business first. I'd like to make a recommendation to continue 1365, the district cannot be here tonight, so have them two meetings.
Second.
The motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition? Thank you. Going proceed to 1366. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, remembering the late C.D. Gavin Senior and the contributions made by him to our community.
Thank you, our Senator John Roy, members of the council. Henry Davis Jr., 3117, Iowa Drive, South Indiana, Secretary of Justice, Attorney General. Um, I actually am in the force right now and want to ask folks about their family, uh, several of these resolutions being examined, if you can help parents stand with me while this resolution being read. Uh, right now, this is the first step in a number of steps that's going to be taken on behalf of the family as well as folks that are obviously support [inaudible]. Uh, to, uh, to invoke, to inject a conversation about the legging, legacy on the west side of South Bend. Uh, what we've been doing and what we have done in the past, the lead up to current day, we've been trying to define, um, a path, an identity. Uh, there recently council members have participated in budget session talks which have allowed, uh, the formation of a new softball field at Martin King Junior Center. Uh, at that field currently, uh, there is a number of organizations that participate. There also are a number of games that are played on Sunday afternoon and all throughout the week. And so what we wanted to do is provide that field with some sort of identity. Uh, the reason you have this before you right now, and just give you a few minutes on background, Mr. Gavin, um, Junior that's here right now, uh, as well as, uh, his mother, Mrs. Mrs. Earl Gavin, uh, they have participated at a very high level in making sure that we have some activity here on that field. The reason why the refurbishment of that field was in place is because of the activities that were started by Mr. Gavin that's standing behind it. Uh, again, if you go over there during the course of the summer, as well as right now, you will see a ball baseball, I mean softball league that has been started where we have seen a number of teams from outside the area, Mr. Walker Ranger. They started to compete within that neighborhood which we have not had that traction nor we have had that traffic over a certain amount of time for a very long time, over two decades. And so what we're trying to do is not only say that we want that sustained growth there at that particular spot, but also get that spot in identity. And also that identity will speak to the legacy that we're going to write to speak about that's written here before you. So if you allow me, uh, for a moment, whereas South Bend County Council recognizes the city of South Bend, Indiana has a rich history which so many of residents have contributed to over many generations. Whereas in the early 1930s, a seventeen-year-old outfield pitcher, C.B. Gavin, was making a name for himself on a baseball diamond which he locally, played locally with the Monarch Athletic Club, managed by Harold E. Smith, and on the South Bend Central High School team coached by Elmer Burnham. And whereas C.B. Gavin was known on the Mars as a speedy outfielder, and when he pitched, he was known for striking out many more batters than there were innings, for throwing out runners at home plate and for the many home runs he's launched. And whereas C.B. Gavin is remembered for his single handling leading the South Bend Central High School baseball team to a eastern division Northern Indiana championship with a three homer and seven runs batted into a defeat to four high schools by a score of thirty, uh, ten to thirty, ten to three, sorry, and was awarded all top office of honors and named overall Congress MVP, and is additionally commemorated as a very good gifted central bear footballplayer who became an all-Congress standout. Whereas C.B. Gavin is also remembered for his pitching talents when he scattered five hits and struck out eighteen batters for the Monarch Athletic Club during the St. Joe Valley post semi-pro tournament against the ball hand team of Mr. Walker, which earned him the title of body news media as Splashy Monarch Tourist, as well as for the rich legacy which was passed on to his county county members. Now therefore, her resolve by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana as follows. Section one, upon the twentieth anniversary of his passing, Mr. C.B. Gavin's tenure, the South Bend County Council is proudly recognized that the many talented contributions made by him during his academic studies at South Bend Central High School and for the Monarch Athletic Club. Section two, the common council notes that I see a better presence today because of the people like C.B. Gavin Senior who dedicated themselves and excellent inspired us by the rich legacy of the high. Section three, the resolution shall be in full force and effect from its and afterwards adopted by the common council on approval by the mayor. Council acts that you, um, adopt this by full affirmation. However, once we leave here, we're going to go to the park where, which we are settling in Jennifer October, to have this discussion about naming, uh, the park in the honor of this gentleman. And so this is a true, uh, the first step in the process. However, because of this legacy and even building off of some of the wins that Silverhawks have had this year, and how baseball is like a method sport, we're really trying to make sure that that baseball or that softball field is going to be sustained and it's going to grow and it's going to help that community in that area to grow at an exponential rate and obviously something for us to be proud of as the investment that's ours back into that local neighborhood center. So again, council members, I look for your full occupation and voting on this one. Uh, we do have members from the family, uh, Gavin family. I'm going to ask that either one or both of them to actually speak in favor of it. And so if you do have any questions to them, you know, please.
Thank you. Anyone like to speak in favor of this?
Uh, good evening, uh, good evening to everyone. I speak humbly.
Name and address, sir?
Uh, C.B. Gavin, Junior, 324 Brubaker Lane, Park 606, South Bend, Indiana, 466.5. I humbly speak for my family. Uh, this is a great honor for my dad. Um, when I was a coach, uh, about, about this idea, I kind of, I stepped back from it because, um, you know, um, we are, we're a humble family. And, uh, this is really for my dad, and most of all in my mouth, to keep myself together. And, uh, I really never knew how good my father was because he never talked about what he did as athlete. And when, and as I was thinking about this yesterday, I was thinking about how my dad could catch it in the backyard and how he wouldn't talk about the sport of baseball or football, he would always talk about, did I do certain things around the house? Did I do what my mom has to do? So he used the sport as a discipline tool and learning for me to draw us the right way. Speaking on behalf of softball fields at Martin King Center, that was a vision, a vision from God. Um, still hasn't been here since years, and we started a free softball clinic here for the past four years, going on five years. Uh, we have a deal with a hundred and eighty-one kids a day during the week. Kids from Rochester, Clinton, Elkhart, South Bend, uh, southwestern Michigan. And we get letters constantly wanting to know when our date for the next year. And all of that is taken care of because we, as a community, have a back for it. And I have to thank my pastor, Pastor Carlos Haley, who helped, helped push this and said we all have a gift, we need to use it. And but I'm just asking on what my father did through. He was a scout master. He helped kids in the community. My old Leonard talked about how sweet he was, you know, important to talk to him, and he would give very advice. So really, if this is passed through, this would be a great honor, not only for my father, but for the family, but most importantly for the community because we're trying to bring a new life back into that area of town because we know that if something bad happens, every outlet of here to Chicago would be there trying to cover it. So we're trying to bring new life back to that community. And also I think people like Karen White, chief of that area, I think people like you must have been who regards making yourself visible. And also Mr. Davis for coming forth with this idea. And my mom, she didn't know what, she didn't know what to say when I told, told her about it and my brothers and sisters there who live in this city, they're waiting by the phone wanting to know what happened. So I come to the city asking for full support and, and, uh, we won't let you down. I don't need a guy, I'll make sure to play enough right, Dan ran right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in favor?
Good evening, council. Brother Greg Brown, 1238 Diamond, South Bend, Indiana. I grew up around Martin King, that's my area, I've been there a long time. And to see them put the energy in and stuff back, we was at the last council board meeting, we seen a softball champion team. To put the light back into the city, a field that wasn't being used. I see C.B. out there, it was raining, he was still out there. To pull kids in and being a youth minister, it's hard dealing with kids in this community. But when you can bring them together to do something positive, I'm asking the council board to look into this and to see that this grow so we can continue to put South Bend back because we was listed as a dying city and I know we not dying. And I'm asking my God's grace that you find a favor of this. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. It's under fire, but within, truly united for a better government. Post-Jordan Fox, 1976, South Bend, Indiana. Hope you find it in your heart to pass this. It should be something that's well worth it. I've been doing it Gavin family for a long time, and I just hope to God that you come and support this, and I'm into it. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? No one in opposition, council? Driving with Mr. Tim Scott?
I just want to say, uh, thank you for all you've done. And I think this is a, uh, very fitting, uh, uh, resolution passed.
Thank you for bringing this forward and that you have my full support.
Well, thank you for supporting the youth of today. I certainly will wish you the best and will be the first one to, uh, suggest that we adopt this by affirmation.
Council member Davis?
I join in with Dr. Varne for that type of vote, and I'd like to wish, um, wish my words of support to the Gavin family. Um, it's, uh, oh, and let the, um, works that I do speak for me and the work that your father has done, even though I am a great, still seeking for him today. And so remember, that's what I think about your work since you're father and, um, your family that you have done, those all lifelong works and they continue in the life of each one of the children who you help make to each day. So congratulations.
Thanks to you, Mr. Furley.
I wish you thanks, C.B. Gavin, I've watched you grow and develop from the years being a member of, uh, Urban League and your commitment to our youth. It's just exciting to see the number of you that are on the field. I've driven past, uh, the center on many occasions and, uh, even my grandson can't wait until he can start playing as well. So thank you to you, your mother, your family, for your commitment to not only our youth but the city as well.
And I'd like to commend C.B. for, I've known him for a long, long time, and I've seen him on any place where you got a field in South Bend from somewhat grass fields even to the blacktop of the Ole Miss school where you can play ball out in the back there. So again, I appreciate that. I know that the council has helped a little bit, uh, other, other different businesses in South Bend, and I think that's very important that you're carrying the torch and everybody. So we appreciate all the great work you're doing.
First, we needed really quick, I wanted to add this, uh, this small bit of information, which is a bit pretty big. I'm delighted to talk about the South Bend Hall of Fame. I've been in a conversation with the folks over at the [inaudible] stadium, uh, given the fact that, uh, Joe Hart, obviously he's the president of the team and he's, uh, somewhat over the South Bend Hall of Fame. So they're willing to have this conversation about South Bend Baseball Hall of Fame, to bring in conversations such as this one, and also about some of the legal participation of participants that are came to this area, Mr. Gavin being one of those folks. And we obviously have paid our attention to some of those things to exhibit that in South Bend, reasonable art ad, uh, this past fall. So there is a number of things that have, are part of the attraction, a part attraction of this city that we have really not paid that much attention to. And also I want to give a big thanks to Mr. Cobach who's sitting there in the back. He's a historian, he's a gentleman who has obviously brought a lot of this information to the forefront and makes a whole lot of sense about what has taken place, uh, with some of the history that we need getting out, whether it's the white or black history, South Bend history. And so obviously this is what we're trying to push through. Again, I look for your support through this, on this, but also we need to meet with the park board in October.
Motion, Mr. Scott? Make a motion to adopt this resolution?
Second.
Favor of the [inaudible].
Would you come down?
So John, we're going to take that back.
Congratulations. You passed some research.
Thank you. Thank you for all you did. Resolution, resolution 1365. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana congratulating South Bend Silverhawks manager Mark Haley for being selected as the Midwest League Manager of the Year. Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, thank you very much. All right, it's a resolution for the common council, the city of South Bend congratulating South Bend Silverhawks manager Mark Haley, selected as the Midwest League Manager of the Year. Whereas the common council notes that Mark Haley was selected by the Pittsburgh Pirates in the twenty-sixth round of nineteen seventy-seven, [inaudible]. Pursued his college studies at the University of Nebraska State, and then spent over a decade, went to Chicago White Sox coach several years with the Silverhawks. Two thousand five, Mark was named the manager for Silverhawks, and in that year also was named the manager of the Midwest League and the player development man of the year for the Arizona Diamondbacks. September ninth of this year, we will be remembered as a celebration took place at the recently named Four Winds Field at Kowalski Stadium, when Silverhawks manager Mike Mark Haley was dressed with Gatorade and some other beverages, and his team celebrated after they won the right to head to the Midwest League Championship Series, with the celebration also including a towel, fill, shaving cream, bath. Whereas the council is further proud to recognize that this year, the 2013 South Bend Silverhawks on our end of the line, was manager Mark Haley's sixth team to qualify for the Midwest League playoffs, with the two thousand five team capturing the Midwest League championship. Whereas in addition to being named manager of the Midwest League in two thousand five or two thousand eight, the common council is now proud to publicly recognize that Mark Haley was selected by his peers as this year's Manager of the Year. Twenty thirteen season was a great year with attendance of forty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-one, with fans enjoying and cheering the Silverhawks, seeing the fireworks. After the game is having a great time filled with the class of Philly with Arizona Diamondbacks. We will soon, soon have a permanent bronze memorial bearing the likeness of Stanley Kowalski, with the main entrance to honor this great Cleveland pitcher who also put the [inaudible]. Whereas, it's thanks to all of the council, on behalf of all the residents of the city of South Bend, publicly congratulating Mark, manager of the South Bend Silverhawks for being named the twenty thirteen Manager of the Year. Council is already looking forward to next season and wish Mark continued success, the team and continued great times with his wife Anne, son J.R., and daughter Kelly. This resolution shall be in full force and effect after it's adopted by the council and approval by the mayor. And I'd like to thank Mark, he won't talk about it, but the last couple of years, him, he and his wife Anne, who went through a lot of, lot of, lot of health problems, and I'm proud to say he's standing here, it didn't look good for a while, but he'll be the first to mend, but I will thank Anne because there was a time when we went up to the hospital to visit him, and I didn't know at the time he was in a coma, and thank, I didn't sweat on and say, how you doing? Because I don't think that would have been a good thing, but it was good. But I know, he is, he's done tremendously, uh, things he has done for the community. We all have time to go in and look he's done for the kids in the area, how he takes his, his teammates, I mean, his team members out to the community and speaks of, that will turn us over to Mark.
Well, thank you very much, and, uh, first of all, we've come a long way, haven't we? I can remember sitting here talking about, uh, we're going to move to Illinois, we're going to sell, we're going to do all this stuff, but you know what? Joe Kern jumps up and saves the team and, uh, now look at us, now we can break the record and [inaudible]. Got the flag going again in baseball, we got everybody coming around, uh, everybody kind of sees it, congratulations. We got another culture group that, uh, we're targeting to get, we're going to get some great baseball players to help them. I want to thank you guys though, because you've been with us, all right? You've been through the hard times and, uh, we've sat here and had some knock down, drag out meetings about what we're going to do. And, uh, I think, uh, with the cooperation of everybody and the intelligence and understanding what's going on out in the community and keeping the thumb on the pulse, we were able to bring in Andrew Berlin, we, he saw what we were all about, he knew what we were all about, he invested in us and just what he's doing well because of the commitment that you guys have made, baseball and this community. And, uh, it's very important to me and, uh, you know, also with what happened the last couple of years, the community, uh, basically saved my life. I can obviously say that, uh, there's so many, a lot of people who reached out to me and reached out to my wife and, and, uh, I really thank you because, uh, you know, the Diamondbacks are always asking, hey, you know, there's a, there's double A job open, there's a triple A job open, and, uh, I go, not even good enough. I said, I'll say right here. As I, I see the passion, I see, you know, all you guys up there, most of you are friends of mine, all right? We fish together, you know, we golf together, we've done all kinds of things, all right? We're all in this together and we're going to make this community, and we've done a great job. I see it growing and growing, it's getting better and better, a lot of, lots going on. But, but look at the crowd, everybody's interested, everybody wants their hand in it. You know, I'm excited about it and I'm very fortunate to be part of it for you guys to recognize, and that's even more important. Uh, but I thank you and again, anything I can do to help anybody at any time to make this thing go, uh, this baseball community grow and grow and grow, putting a bunch of kids in the big leagues and they come back, we don't even have to ask you guys, they owe us, yeah? So that's what we're going to try to do, so.
Do you have time yet or is it still?
Oh, he's got ten more minutes.
Ten more minutes?
So thank you so much for everything, thank you, council, I appreciate all the support that you've given us and, uh, of course, we'll be, uh, coming back and asking again. So just going to keep growing and growing and growing, nobody's going to stop us, all right? So thank you and, uh, appreciate it, congratulations.
One quick thing before we go to the council that, uh, it's very true, minimum being triple A if not the major leagues, I think South Bend, I know South Bend is very fortunate to have a manager of this caliber, this class of teaching the kids to come to this city to play A baseball where again, he's been triple A if not the major, so we're very fortunate with that. But I'm fortunate, I'm, I'm very fortunate. On behalf of council?
Uh, yes, Mark, thank you for all you do, um, you know, the one thing that I think is overlooked, well, two things, is we probably need a resolution for Anne as well. When he's away, you know, seven days in a row, every day during the whole entire summer, um, she's holding down the fort, so, um, thank you Anne for what you do too. Um, the one thing that Mark really misses, uh, isn't explained, is his ability to teach, and that's why he's so good at what he does at his level. Um, you know, baseball is one thing, but baseball in the minor league system is totally different. There are different sets of rules, there are different scenarios that they have to have limitations on what they can do. They can't do everything the big leagues can do. And it's just, it's a credit to Mark and your ability to, uh, to educate those players and send them on, uh, throughout life. So, and Mark and I talk a lot, and, uh, we talk about life a lot, and Mark really has that dialed in, and I know he passes that on. So, uh, that's a big thing. There's always opportunities, so yes, you didn't make it to the championship, you, you know, could have played a few more games, but at least you got time to learn, you know, work on your casting, so.
Well, I tried to, you know, it's getting better.
Thank you.
He doesn't like me, I fly, we fly, he says I share all the cash. I fish, fish.
So you're saying you guys have touched anything? You said something, you said you guys have touched anything?
He said he did.
You know, I want to say congratulations to you for a successful season of this year. Um, obviously we'd probably like to see you guys go a little further, but, uh, council, um, uh, made a, uh, a stand, you know, some years ago and made sure that those dollars were there to re-uh, renovate the stadium and obviously was paying off dividends for the city. Um, the one thing that you did talk about, and I would like to know, uh, being a senior A team, is there any thoughts about going up to double A or triple A?
At this level? I mean, here at town?
Yeah, that's where you are.
Well, it, it will be tough because, uh, there's certain requirements and, uh, they got to align leagues and it'd be tough. For the population base, uh, I'll give you an example, the triple A is in Indianapolis, okay? Double A is, our double A is in Mobile, Alabama. A lot bigger, a lot bigger community, a lot bigger, and they, uh, you know, you've got to average nine, ten, twelve thousand people to, uh, sustain that type of level.
Okay. Well, anyway, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir, I'll say congratulations, and I won't embarrass anyone here by asking how many quarters there are in a game.
I've got a few, I've got a few young ones that kind of understand what you're talking about.
Great job.
Thank you.
Uh, Mike, South Bend fortunate to have you on this, uh, Silverhawks, but I think you are being somewhat duplicitous in saying that you received an education at University of Nebraska.
You know, the Oklahoma people always said that the head on the helmet didn't mean knowledge, so. You know, the Oklahoma's [inaudible], so you don't want to [inaudible].
Congratulations on your success and best wishes from [inaudible].
Congratulations also, it's been great.
Congratulations also, it's been great to see how the whole city has taken part of the Silverhawks. It is great to see, there's some great crowds that we have over here.
And thanks for your commitment to South Bend and congrats on a really great season.
Thanks, girl.
Thank you as well, look forward to another great year.
Come on out, y'all, no, I'll try not to get kicked out of too many games.
I'm getting them.
Move for family recommendations?
Sure. I don't know. I'll stay with that, I'll oppose.
Okay, now, next, we have a report from Trino. Councilman Davis, you want to introduce?
Yes, but before we introduce these folks that came in from Trino, I want to ask that we can increase their time by another five minutes to give them 20 minute time. I just feel really bad if they can travel one hour to get to South Bend for a 15 minute presentation. I just think that we owe them just that much more because of them just still having to travel for tonight.
So move. Take your motion and second on favor. Any air position? Mr. Scott, you will tighten them?
Alright, sure will. Thank you, well, thank you. The folks from Trino are coming in today and again, thank you so much for traveling down here. They are consultants as we have to pass the bills some time ago in efforts to increase the job, um, to increase the employment level of African Americans, minorities, women, which is better known as MBE or WBE, name businesses. So as we are trying to work towards a better day in South Bend, as we're looking towards equity in South Bend, as we are looking towards making sure that folks of minority descent can get a fair look at getting projects and working on projects. Trino has come in to help us with that particular endeavor. And so, as of current date today, we are still working at this, obviously there's, there's a work in progress. However, through clarity and understanding of where we are as a city of South Bend and making sure that minority farms get their fair shake and the families that support the minority farms get their fair shake, we're looking forward to a presentation that will suggest where we need to step off that and move further into the future with. So, Mrs. Davis and Miss, I'm sorry, I'm John Black, I'm getting tired, Admiral, is that right? I'm sorry. I am so sorry, it happens sometimes. It is, okay, I got it, I got it, I'm sorry, hey, no problem now, it's been a long day. But Ms. Admiral, who's the president, you have the floor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for having us. Again, can you hear me?
What's, uh, what's your sound? The main is hard, the flat ones around the table.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, great. Again, thank you so much for having us, yeah? The company's name is Trino Inc., been in business for 15 years. We're a diversity and inclusion firm. A member of my employees, they reside in the state of Indiana. In fact, I was born in Indiana, I'm from Chicago. And our expertise is to assist entities in developing their diversity program, which we've been working with a number of members here on doing that. We were incorporated in 1997 and it's been a pleasure, 15 years, everybody's been like that. We have managed and have monitored and recorded on multi-year dollars in projects. Mainly in construction, but we also have clients that are in private sector as well as nonprofit sector. What you have before you, for your convenience, is a copy of our presentation. I'm going to go here and say, but it would go into the heads in that room. Our services include contract compliance, assisting in certification for MBE and WBE and DVE programs as well as policy and program development. Fortunately, in being in business, we also own a proprietary software program that assists accounting, MBE, WBE spend, as well as workforce hiring initiative that a client may have. Our services also include training in the procurement area, facilitating various different diversity related initiatives. Currently, our company is certified as an MBE, WBE, DVE and also, also Women's Own Small Businesses with the federal government. Our affiliations are vast, and that we're affiliated with a number of professional organizations as well as trade association related organizations. Our experience as I previously mentioned is both in public, private, and non-for-profit. Some of our public entities include City of Chicago, the City of Chicago, the Office of Procurement, the Office of Compliance, the Chicago Housing Authority, as well as the Public Building Commission of Chicago, Chicago Department of Transportation, the Illinois Sports Facility Authority, which is the landlord for the Chicago White Sox. Talking about baseball tonight. And Metropolitan Parental Exposition Authority. Some of our private sector clients include Oracle, Parsons, the University of Chicago, as well as working with Trail Corbin and Slick Environmental Inc. On the non-for-profit side, they include the Little Village, a Chamber of Commerce in Chicago, as well as Navy Pier Inc. On tax and criminal plaintiff type projects, we've worked with Jewel Alstom, Fry Store, Rush University Medical Center, Rely Supermarket, Rosetta Auto Pudge Projects, Gateway and the Hospital, urgent project. Our project with Rush University Medical Center, and then two was a billion dollar project where we assisted the hospital in developing that diversity program and the workforce hiring program as well. Again, as far as on providing services, here is what we can report on. And when we're reporting on various diversity initiatives, we utilize our global product tracking system, as I mentioned. It is a proprietary software system, it's a spreadsheet, and it tracks MBE, WBE, DVE spend as well as workforce hiring. It's a tool which eliminates duplication of data entry. It also assists in mitigating standards such as that might, that might be found on the workforce relative to restitution, but it provides real-time M and W and BBE tracking as well as LBE, which is your local business enterprise. And it also assists in sharing expeditions payments by the owner because it's assisting the contractors in providing their paperwork and a complete background. The system is very secure, we didn't want to have it released three years because I wanted to make sure that it was secure. It's in a SAT system environment, you have to have your fingerprints, it's bulletproof casing, everything that I wanted to make sure to protect the security of everyone's information, give them the sensitivity of the information that we do collect relative to certified payrolls you're collecting and individuals' personal information, their name, their social security number, their address, their race, their ethnicity, and how much they're making. And coming here to say, to South Bend, it's been a pleasure. And working with you and identifying some initiatives that you had, we were charged here with a number of things to look at. And we met with a number of stakeholders, we met with the mayor, a number of his representatives from his department, also with a number of council members, community representatives, as well as attended a number of meetings to collect information so that we could report and make recommendations on your utilization plan. We submitted a number of reports, coordinated and implemented your first vendor fair, which was very successful, had greatly attended. People were really excited about meeting representatives from the area's department. We've worked with procurement department as well as with the finance department. I just want to thank George King, who's been very instrumental in obtaining information and working through a number of your initiatives. We've also in our committee a number of initiatives with the Indiana Department of Administration, also looking at how many companies you currently have that are in your database, seeing methodologies that can assist in increasing the participation of minorities in your business enterprise program. As I said, we've met with a number of stakeholders and including a number of organizations here locally, your Michiana African American Chamber of Commerce, your Heston Leadership Council, your Margaret Smith and Women's Entrepreneurial Initiatives, a number of stakeholders again so that we can give them the feedback so that we can make recommendations so that you can make a own decision as to how you want to go about which approach. We created templates, we reviewed and made recommendations relative to your current ordinance. We provided recommendations on this practice, we developed an outreach program and we submitted that for recommendation. We submitted the MBE, WBE utilization plan as well as provided technical assistance for city administration on procurement related things. We drafted the diversity program policy statement, wonderful opportunity to see that's usually placed on your website. We made a number of recommendations as to the website also relative to what you might want to communicate to the community relative to your MBE and WBE program. And we drafted a number of procurement related forms, research and presented a list of private companies here in the South Bend area and have informed you as to their various diversity programs. And we got with the database for minority and women owned certified plans. Our next steps, which we're really excited to go forward since we made these recommendations, we need to complete that common concrete as well, but to provide departmental and educational support for South Bend. So assist the Diversity Utilization Board and the City of South Bend in the design and implementation of your outreach events, assist in implementing the Diversity Utilization Plan. Also, and drafting purchasing policies which would incorporate some of the recommendations as you accept them into your procurement policies. Participate in the Diversity Utilization Board and interpretations and discussions as to how you want to go forth in implementing and conducting your meetings and also looking at how you want to incorporate some of those findings into your database procurement. And also, assist in advancing facilitation at the workforce hiring plan upon requests. Why Trino, we are the subject matter experts in MBE, WBE, and DVE programs. Also in workforce hiring related programs. Multiple experience, we are looked at as a one-stop shop. I have a number of staff members and their experience is not only in diversity, but also in procurement. When you're developing a diversity program, it's important that you bring also the element of procurement because the initiative is, if there's a building, it has to be built. But at the same time, you want to ensure that your initiatives for your M and WBE are also incorporated in those initiatives. Our software solution that we utilize to track if identified a particular project which you might want to have tracked going into the next phase would be utilized so that it has a good light for you all to get to the point where you can generate reports and that can be seen remotely, you don't have to wait on a report from us. You can just push a button and give them a timeline and be able to see this happening.
And before we address any questions that you may have, we want to add that also currently we are in a process of developing four disparity studies. Working with some other clients in terms of disparity studies, they assist government entities in designing a program that is legally based. So currently, we are working on four different disparity studies throughout Chicago and as well as local state of Illinois to set numerical goals that need strict scrutiny and early tailored requirements of the US Supreme Court rendering. We appreciate this opportunity and we want to add that we had a very specific scope. Our contract was not mirroring the ordinance. So we had a very specific scope of work and so what we hope that we have outlined for you this evening are the accomplishments that we have put for your South Bend to date and how we've five or six slides of accomplishment is not a bad way to start. So with that, if you have any questions that you want to ask.
We'll start with Tim. I'll let you start with Tim Scott, we'll work our way down.
I'll defer for now. Thank you so much for traveling in and briefing us really quick on what you guys have done, you ladies have done. I appreciate your support. However, and I guess this is where I'm at with it, I participated with a group of four folks that live as well on council right now. And when we changed some things for our ordinance that's been dormant since 1986. And so at this point, what we are looking for, and obviously this is not part of the scope that you were given per your contract, but what, you know, I'm really trying to hit at is the fact that there are many folks who are here locally, local contractors, whether they're women or from the minority community as a whole, that necessarily does not, do not get the opportunity to either A, bid out on some of these projects or even not even bid out or win some of these bids that are out there. And the point I'm trying to drive home is that those numbers need to change significantly. We can't go from zero to one, I think that we have done a great job. There is a federal mandate, there's a state mandate, and obviously we've done a derivative of both as we have here in South Bend as a local ordinance. But that's because it's just not, ordinance does not mean that we do not have to match up with the state or the federal government and our numbers. And so, when we're talking about minority, improving minority numbers, again, women, African Americans, Latinx, et cetera, we have to pay attention to the folks that are not employed in the city that have the ability to be employed but do not get the opportunity to with the jobs that are out there. So as we look forward to continuing to work with you, we want to improve those numbers. I want to see those numbers improved. Many of the folks that I'm talking about right now, stay in living second district, and so they need the opportunity to work. It's not enough to say that we're going to, you know, have another, holding another diversity fair, that doesn't help. What helps is that those folks are actually working, they're collecting a check, and they're able to take care of their family and everybody's happy at the end of the day. But again, I look forward to working with you in the future.
Okay, we have plans, let's go, councilmember Shay.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you, have you created any jobs thus far? And my second point is, what's your frustrations thus far working in the community? So two-part question.
I want to start with the first question in terms of have we created any jobs? Our scope did not include employment related services in terms of workforce hiring. The priority for our engagement was to focus on the business enterprise focus of the diversity initiatives for the city. So when you speak in terms of creating job opportunities indirectly, I can say yes because it was our recommendation that the City of South Bend hire a diversity compliance officer, which they have done. So to indirectly answer your question, I would say yes, we created one. That is going to have a huge and major impact so that the City of South Bend now has someone that is accountable to the city that represents the community, that is from the community, that will be able to officially speak on behalf of the city and the system. And that is something that we always recommend because someone always needs to be accountable from the government entity. And I'm sorry, the second part of your question.
Was your frustrations, what you're, I thought part of the objective was to create jobs and I was going to ask you what your frustrations were with the community in that you could not do that, so if we had some solutions. So if we had some solutions, would that help?
Well, you know, it's going to take some time. I wouldn't say that there are any frustrations per se because we recognize that the city of South Bend is on the cutting edge of creating its diversity program, its diversity objectives. And so there is a collaboration effort that has to take place in order to ensure that it is done in the way that it will meet local, state, and federal standards. And so that's the expertise that we bring to the table and as we employ it, that's what we're looking to grow on.
Hey, Dr. Viner, we have three minutes left.
Got no questions.
Thank you. In your recommendation for us to create a diversity compliance officer, did that also include in your foresight that you will still be a part of the whole program or was that just a diversity officer and then you say, thank you, you now move on to another city? And was that foresight inclusive of you added diversity or was where were you on that concept?
Well, I wouldn't say that it was part of the recommendation, but as we understood our 2013 scope to be would be that we would support the purchasing manager in their department, the city, and if they were to hire a diversity compliance officer, that upon their request, we would be a support to that individual. We would assist in the transition of knowledge, we would assist in any training and be a resource to the department as well as to the individual.
So therefore, in, you're looking to see your contract continue for another year with a different type of scope?
Correct. And in fact, our scope has been amended so that we can assist and take on the role as being advisory and also assisting in the implementation of your program. Our original contract was relative to the licensing of our software solution and then some minimum services to be provided. However, given where upon your request, they'll be at from the city to ask if we could just continue on to assist in the implementation of your program, we then allowed for a change in our contract to be more service orientated, send for licensing the program at this particular time. However, the third year still allows for the licensing. What we like to see is that our clients are well suited for and can carry on a diversity program.
If it would have warned that, let me have two questions.
And we need even more tools.
Questions?
I'll just email you my concerns and questions. And one pertains to the disparity studies that those other cities have undertaken and just talk a little bit more about the process and what led them to go that particular route and to see where we're at as a city, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your time. I also have a lot of questions. We're out of time, so I will email those to you. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, next, in the corner of the city offices, Mayor Pete, come up to the portion and give us a small review. We have about 10 minutes for this, so probably do it five minutes of what he wants to talk about and then some questions from the council.
All right, I'll try to be swift. Good evening. Thank you again, first of all, for the opportunity. I'm very glad that we resumed the monthly customer. I had a chance to address council with an update on the reports to city offices. And maybe I'll begin on the theme of council communication. Also thank council members who have been patiently working with us in the new protocol we tried to establish for ensuring that council requests for information are dealt with promptly. So far on our tracker, I checked today, we've received 90 requests or sets of requests for specific information since we started going with this approach from A. Seventy-nine of those so far have been responded to. I know there's another 11 that have been routed that we're still working on getting with, but I can tell you that our end certainly helped us to be a little more orderly in tracking our efforts to respond to council members' requests for efficient action. And certainly hope your experience has been the same. I look forward to working with you to refine the process to make sure we're being responsive as we can. One we piece of is from last week, transportation engineers from the design firm ADCOM gave a follow-up presentation about restoring two-way streets in downtown South Bend. And the lead engineer there, Ian Lockwood, outlined a possible phased approach to implementing two-way streets. That was a theme we heard in some of our conversations with the council. So those design concepts were discussed in detail, especially when it came to the first phase. And I'm really excited to see the level of refinance that this, the meetings with the State Department of Transportation, MACO, South Bend Schools, Historical Society, Army Parks and Recreation Department, and other stakeholders. I want to thank council members who were able to attend one or both of the meetings or interact in some other way with the engineers. I know it wasn't possible for everybody to make it, so just want to remind council members and residents that both of those presentations in their entirety are posted online for the city website for anybody to make a little, like to make a little time to view the videos that were relevant to that. Also, we just got six months in reports from 3-1-1 earlier this month. And I won't read it to you subjectively, but certainly encourage you to take a look at it on the website if you have a moment and I'll just give you a few highlights. The program is definitely fully out and running in terms of the goals for the first six months, though it does not yet include every city department. We now have waterworks, street department, sewer department, traffic and lighting, solid waste, mayor's office, and most recently, just this last month, added streetlights to that. Now, last month, we took 12,636 calls. Appears that after shooting up initially, the calls have more or less leveled off across the last two to three months, though we can certainly expect it to grow if we were to add as we plan to more departments to the 3-1-1 protocol. The abandoned call rate as of last month was 8%. Based on the benchmark we've seen, if you can keep it below 10%, that's pretty good. So we're going to work to make sure we have the resources to keep it that way. In August, the average speed to answer 39 seconds. We've had other months where it's gone upwards of a minute. We really want to keep it below a minute and ideally below 45 seconds. We'll continue trying to drive improvements. Top five subbeds for calling, solid waste pickup, other solid waste issues, miscellaneous information as people call them, all the different kinds of questions about the city, yard waste questions, and interest in trash containers. We received a lot more than we expected by way of trash container calls, so that's prompted us to begin following up on the houses where we think we've delivered the trash container to make sure that actually happened. And we'll be updating you on what we've learned as we drive toward a goal of setting a two-hour replacement when somebody calls in letting us know they're missing a trash container. So just a little bit of insight on what 3-1-1 is doing to help us problem solve and certainly encourage you to spend a little time with that report. The council's moped ordinance takes effect October 1st. An initial registration for mopeds that expire would be good until April 30th, 2015. And after we face that and the registrations go, May 1st, April 30th every year. The city is, as we moved to implement, implement this ordinance from the council, the way we're going to do it is that people can come to the front desk of the police station from 8:00 to 8:00, AM to PM, and the stickers, as I understand it, will be applied directly to the moped to make sure there's integrity in the process for that kind of licensing. Tomorrow, we'll be doing a public update on the application of the problem property nuisance ordinance that's planned for 10:30. We may have said 10 earlier. We're freaking that or we're accommodating another press conference that's going on elsewhere. If you have a chance to be there, I would be in the roll call room, sorry, maybe here in County Cityville, so stay tuned, I guess, for details on that. But bottom line is we have a chance to implement, as you know, we asked, we asked some time to really get it up running, but October is when it actually is going to apply and people are going to start seeing the enforcement of that ordinance. So it's important to get the word out publicly on that. The Cook for America calls are in town. Again, there was an event yesterday with group cap Michiana. That's a good kind of acting, civic acting, looking at our open data, our first in state open data platform to try to get more information that they can use to benefit the city. And they've also begun working toward an app called City Voice. And the purpose of City Voice is to draw more input from neighborhoods, from residents about low spurge priorities, the base city when it comes to vacant and abandoned houses and dealing with that. So we're forward to seeing that we're finding that work and sharing that with council and public soon. I was grateful for an invitation for each council member on the progress of the Anti-Violence Commission. Chief Teachman Reverend Miller and I spent some time in the council committee going over that. For those who weren't able to attend, I know Councilmember White, who's on the commission, has information from that briefing. And I know that we'd be happy to share more of that information for anybody who's interested. And for the sake of time, I'll just wrap up with a reminder that the next mayor's night out is going to be this week. Come full circle to the first district. It's going to be a measles school beginning at 5:30. It's always great if council members will be there and we'll be there as department heads to be with anybody who wants a piece of my mind.
All right, thank you, sir. Before we turn, I'll start with Karen White. I'd like to thank you for your upcoming service and your commitment to our country. Thank you for that. Karen White?
I'm thankful that on this coming Monday, we will be opening up the fire station.
Yes.
And in the room military, number five, station number five. So I'm glad and I really appreciate your administration and helping to get a new fire station. So we're looking forward to celebrating to have Lockwood's coming in.
Yes, should have mentioned that. Very much looking forward to celebrating together. And I know the firefighters are looking forward to getting back to place at their station in the district, too. Thank you for your collaboration on that.
Questions, this evening? No questions.
No questions, please.
Thank you. Really quick, Mayor, and I never, you know, shat an opportunity to speak with you directly. We have a presentation that we're going to see a little later on and I'm going to speak briefly towards it. It's called the Assess Value of Our City and how do we set our tax rates at certain levels, the amount of money that we're going to try to pull in and basically at the rates and levels that we would like to see them at in order for the city to deliver the services that the city is supposed to render to its tax-paying residents. However, my initial thoughts is that I think a lot of those things are going to be contingent on unemployment rate, our inability to attract and recruit employers to this area. And as a matter of fact, it's continuing to go up. We're around 12% right now. Yeah, that's right.
Can you say which dataset that comes from? I think that's a whole different.
Well, it came from the workforce one, workforce development offices. As a matter of fact, I got it from a gentleman that works there that I can't recall his name, however, I got that sent to me. I could see an email.
President, that's your politics.
I could see the email. I could see the email. Okay, I see the email. However, our numbers are suggesting that we're not employing as many people as we possibly can. And the problem that I am having right now is because we are not employing people and we're not pulling in employment opportunities at a high level, really to none, actually, what's going on is that when we do assess values and then we do the taxes and then when we do, you know, fortunately, the vacant and abandoned housing initiatives, et cetera, no one will have the ability to pay out on any fines. And as a result, they're naturally lose their opportunity for necessary housing. And if they lose their housing, what happens if someone has to pick up that housing or not? The house becomes a vacant abandoned property, such a clearly worst case scenario is demolished. And so we're back at square one again with probably the developed areas outside fifth districts. And so that has been an issue that we've had in us with the space for a lot of years now. We have not been able to develop outside of clip areas. And that's where we see the heaviest of our vacant abandoned housing, a lot of our crime, a lot of different things that you're working on to rid our city of. But again, it goes back to our employment base. And if our employment numbers are suggesting that we're higher than the national average and we're higher than the state average, clearly we need to have an aggressive and intentional attempt in order to change the way our employment market looks. We can't deny that and we cannot go as a city. It doesn't matter how many streets we change, none of those things matter. We have to develop an identity for this city and we have to make sure that folks are working in this city so the city can begin to develop. In short, two-way streets make a sense because now we can have more rest to watch, we can have more of those services that people spend their responsible income on. However, if we can't get folks to come in here and have the ability to pay a mortgage or even a rent, we're hurting ourselves and grassing things. So I'm looking for and I ask you for your leadership on how do we attract employers here to like diversify workforce, just not high-tech. But we need to be able to attract employers for people that may just want to be janitors for the rest of their life or folks who want to be lawyers for the rest of their life. It needs to be diversified, trained folks. Yeah, and so that's my question.
No, no, great question because I think job number one remains job creation. And hopefully it'll be clear, and you may see a little bit more of this in the upcoming budget presentation, that the decisions we're making throughout the budget, but especially in the budget regarding development and downtown development are prioritized in order to try to create more jobs. There's, of course, a chicken and egg quality to this. A community that has more jobs will have less crime, better education, outcomes, and so forth. But we also know that if you want to cultivate jobs and attract investors, we have to achieve those things. So we're trying to get to a virtuous cycle and that's one of the reasons why, one of the main measures of success that we hold, for example, ourselves accountable to on the economic development front is the number of jobs created.
Okay, I'll just real quick. One thing I'm working on with some neighborhood groups is streetlights, just going through their neighborhoods and actually assessing where lights are out. You might have seen it on the news, some of the neighborhood groups doing this. So I'll talk to you about that offline. I think it's low hanging fruit that we can get some streetlights either fixed or in place to help some crime issues.
Welcome to that and it might be a great way to stress test some of the new customer service protocols we're trying to put in.
Okay. Thank you. And I think last week, Council Vice President Davis sent a, I think, a memo to corporate council almost sincere, just sent an update, the state police report, the governor chief. Yes, you can expect an update to the row committee later on. Okay, all right, thank you. All right, thank you. At this point, yeah, thank you very much, Mayor. May have a motion resolved in committee. All in favor of that? Aye in the opposition.
I'll remain in the seat.
If you would like to share, Sir Cruzwell, that's fine with me. Here's the guy.
The committee of the hall is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading public hearing. Additional rules governing this portion of the council meeting is available. And if you would like to have copies, I think they're at the table right as you enter the chambers. I do ask that council members allow the petitioner to give his or her report, questions of them. Also, it is at this time only that you will be able to ask questions pertaining to the bill. All the petitioners, you will have opportunity to ask questions when we resolve back into the council portion. I do ask that you allow me opportunity to recognize you prior to addressing questions to the petitioner, prior to asking Mr. Voidy to read bills 44-13, 45-13, 46-13. I would like to entertain a motion to hear these three bills for public hearing portion only.
Move second.
Does it move a second? Are all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. I would now ask Mr. Voidy to please give second reading to bills 44-13, bill 45-13, and bill 46-13.
44-13, public hearing on a bill of the city of South Bend, Indiana, levying taxes and fixing the regular taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the civil city of South Bend for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2014. 45-13, public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating monies for the purpose of defraying the expenses of several departments of the civil city of South Bend for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2014 and ending December 31st, 2014, including all outstanding claims and obligations and fixing a time on the same shelf, thank you, Ted.
Thank you. The Post-Mall and Finance Committee held a public hearing on these three bills and we sent these bills to the full council without a recommendation. Prior to asking the petitioner to come to the podium, I'm going to ask our council attorney to go over the processes-
ending December thirty-first, twenty fourteen, including all outstanding claims and obligations and fixing a time on the same shelf that you passed.
Thank you. The Post-Monland Finance Committee held a public hearing on these three bills and we sent these bills to the full council without a recommendation. Prior to asking the petitioner to come to the podium, I'm going to ask our council attorney to go over the processes and the timelines for these three bills.
Each vendor has a public has the right to speak to the council if they're in favor or in opposition. Anyone who wishes to see a debate in residential address so that Mr. Voidy can take that information down. Everyone, we will be timing the total time for those speaking in favor, those that wish to speak in opposition or to get questions. All of those will be answered during the rebuttal period, which is the formal presentation given by our city controller and I believe the mayor of his bills. The timing of any rebutrances is equal to the total amount of common of the public speaking in favor or in disapproval. So with that.
Thank you so much. We'll now ask our city controller, Mr. Mark Neal, to come and to walk us through the 2014 budget presentation and public hearing. And I don't know if he would like the mayor to join you or.
We plan that I would go over the budget and be available for your office.
Okay, great.
So, Mr. Mark Neal, city controller, thank you very much, Councilman White. It is a pleasure to come before you this evening to talk about the 2014 budget. I think as many of you know, this is our ninth meeting to talk about the budget. We have some additional committee meetings that will still be scheduled after this to continue our discussion. But this evening, we're looking forward to presenting it in full to the public. So, thank you. I think it's appropriate that we start the conversation as from some of the recognition that's gone on earlier in the council this evening, messages that were coming back. The mayor has made that comment about we are coming back and we're changing ways that our business. This evening, Governor Brown made comments about, saying again, we are not a dying city.
That's right.
That was a discussion that went on earlier. We're not a dying city. There's a lot of things going on right now in South Bend that many, many people I think are very excited, energized about. Not to say that everything's been solved, not to say we don't have challenges, we have significant challenges. But we are coming back. I think people feel better generally in the direction that we're heading. We also heard from Mark Haley and the recognition for the Silverhawks, his leadership of the Silverhawks, what Joe Hart's the president, what Andy Berlin is under Cove. I think a lot of discussion. I enjoyed very much his comment about Governor Kern calling on your name to take over that team to keep it here in South Bend and what it's going to now. So I think again, we're turning the corner. Still a long ways to go, but we now have the four wins field at the Stanley Kowalski Stadium. In addition, we heard from Trinal today talking about diversity initiative. What are we doing in the city to make sure that we are opening up procurement opportunities to residents and businesses, minority and women owned businesses here in the city? And our focus is not just on the certified businesses, but just all people who are actively engaged in business, who can qualify, who can compete for bids on city business. And so it's been a focused activity. As we heard from the Trinal folks this evening, we have a long ways to go and we started that effort in terms of changing the way we give attention, giving opportunities to people, promoting procurement, publicizing what's going on. We've seen some successes early this year in hauling of waste, we've seen in people fitting on contracts and we can set them up so that we can provide opportunities for people to win those bids in a visible manner so they may only have won three or four aspects of it rather than the entire contract. So we've really seen, I think, some products. We're small, but at least we think we're heading the right direction. Tiger and Jan Hall's adversity compliance officer with a focus on business development and talking to people, working with purchasing departments, again, I think points us in the right direction. Talk about these things already on the picture, just where are we heading? The good things that have been going on, I apologize for those in the audience who don't agree, they can't see the slides, but we're looking at the Stanley Kowalski Stadium, what's happening there. We're looking at the revitalized downtown. We're looking at ignition park and some of the business that's going on in ignition park. In addition to the great things that have been going on at the Morris and the clearly continuing increasing levels of people attending the Morris, they have a strong now in that in the city, year over year, ever since that renovation thing completed under the leadership that is obviously. So what we're talking about, I think many, the council's heard this before, but I'll go through this quickly, but I think for members of the public, hearing about what South Bend must be aspirationally, we must be a strong and open city for everyone. Where the basics are easy for residents, we pick up the trash, clean water comes out of the pipes, government services are first rate, we're effectively delivering services in an efficient and cost-effective manner. And finally, everyone can thrive, focused on economic development and jobs. The council member Davis's comment earlier, that is job one, that will stay job one, judging this entire administration. The strategy, how do we get there? We've also used, this is also a set of guidelines, guideposts that we've talked about within the administration, shared with council before. We continue to refine, but we're going to talk about measuring how well we deliver services and make decisions based on good information. Streamlining city processes for citizens and residents, 311 being an example of that. Breaking down bureaucratic walls dealing with complex issues right now, we have a condition going out the county, trying to understand how we can share data better regarding property parcels so that we can more easily track, whether it's crime, track 311 calls, track solid waste, utilize GPS systems more effectively. We certainly welcome innovation in question, have it. I think we've been doing a lot of that, not without its challenges. What we're doing, is it the best way of doing it? If it is, let's keep doing it. If there's a way we might be able to do it better, let's talk about that, let's look at that and set up a dialogue about it, see if there's some changes we might want to make. We'll get to certainly form connections and partnerships for economic growth, education, quality of life, both with other government organizations, but also looking at private sector and nonprofits. We have a number of conversations going on right now in those areas. We need to have more discussions here still this year. Finally, attract, grow, retain, engage excellent employees and excellent work department. What are we doing to make sure that people are well trained and capable of their jobs and they're getting ongoing training so they can maybe provision pass departments change? What are we doing to actually attract new employees to the city for the working? So I do want to go over briefly a listing both of the administration and of the council's goals and objectives and priorities for 2014. Because we've had a number of joint sessions, listening sessions, talking about what the interests are, I want to highlight certainly both for the public particularly, but and for others, that I think most of the initiatives and priorities that we have, we have, I think, a fair amount of agreement on, where we should be spending our time. For the administration, we've talked about job one, economic development and jobs. Talk a little more about that here in a moment. Smart streets, smarter streets. What are we doing to make our streets more engaging and easier to do commerce in? Vacant and bad housing initiative, this entire administration will continue to be successful in 2014. It's not just demolitions, it's also revocations, it's also partnerships, et cetera. Information technology, we are finding that as we continue to leverage technology, more and more we can do things faster, more efficiently, but also more effectively. Again, the mayor highlighted just a couple items with the 311 initiative, in terms of highlighting things that were not clear to us before, now we're actually focusing, every phone call that comes in, every question that's been asked, tracking, have we resolved it or is it still open? Is it still open? What's happened? Why isn't it yet been resolved or how long do we expect it to totally resolve? Customer service and performance management, the anti-balance mechanism, the mayor already talked about in terms of the work that's going on there in council member White's participation in that commission. Workforce development, council member Davis mentioned, what are we doing to provide job opportunities? While the city cannot be a employer for all, we certainly support this bottom environment by which job creation can occur. We have some monies in the budget 2014 to do that, be a catalyst, we think some, some additional skills training that are specific to what's needed right now that can lead to some additional jobs. We request the council priority as well. Coroner's talked about what we're doing to make sure that the corridors of western half of Michigan, west and south Michigan, Michigan Walkout, north Michigan, what we do to make sure those are fighting and allow for commercial activity to begin to further grow and develop. Parks and recreation, the mayor, we take off the budget session long as we've talked about, what are we doing? First, thanks to the council for funding the master plan for the parks as well as the master plan, which will be those efforts that keep going on like three to six months. Identify the priorities, we're then looking to fund the parks fund in 2014 to address some of the key priorities on parks and operations to improve our quality of life. Then finally code enforcement, we've had some discussion and more to be had, which is what are we doing to make sure that we are efficiently and effectively addressing code issues, that we are equally treating all property owners regarding code so that things are being handled appropriately and timely and in fair manner. 2014 council priorities, I think a similar listing, again, top of the list, economic development and jobs. Public safety, what are we doing to make sure we're ensuring public safety here in the city? Parks and recreation, what are we doing? Fifty-eight parks, as Phil St. Clair, our department leader talks about it right at the base, we have fifty-eight parks that need to be maintained, but also we like to see them now have additional improvements so they can be a place that kids, particularly as young people, as well as others can come and enjoy. Infrastructure, the council has made it very clear about our focus on curbs and sidewalks and streets. What are we doing to address those issues? We've talked about some of the challenges, we'll get additional money in the budget 2014 to be doing more work in working sidewalks. City quarters, I mentioned, vacant and bad housing, I mentioned, code enforcement, and overall, the council has clearly stated, we've heard you about quality of life, what are we doing with other quality of life initiatives that are making it a better place to live, work, play, that's here in South Bend. So to remind some, but hopefully to inform others who may not be aware of the budget process here in the city, each year, the mayor, the administration proposes an annual city budget and present that to council and through over a course of many public meetings. In addition, that city budget is divided into six categories of activity, so we're ninety individual funds. They're highlighted, the primary one that we talk about the most is the general fund. General fund is primarily used for public safety as well as administration. Special revenue funds refer to the various revenue funds that we have that include our added funds, the unemployment tax, unemployment tax, our code fund, which is also an unemployment tax, our public safety, all of another tax, as well as other special revenue funds that we have listed. Incidentally, we have all of your budget information and we've gone through first nine meetings, all of it is online, each presentation as well as all the detailed discussion under the administration finance tab or web page, under finance, there's a budget tab and you can see all the various options, all the details of budget presentation we've done today. Other funds, debt servicing capital funds, they're just that, they're capital monies that we use for purchases of vehicles right now, as well as some investments in the savings and properties. Enterprise funds refer to fee generating activities, which are primarily are by utilities. So that would be waterworks, wastewater, sewer, solid waste. Internal service funds primarily referring to a central services department that we have that provides services to other departments on a fee basis, as well as our benefit funds, primarily as our health insurance. And then finally trust and agency funds, those are pension, fire and police. So in terms of the process, the common council holds the budget periods as I noted, and then the common council must approve each civil fund. They can approve it as it is, as it is permitted, so they can adjust it, they can reduce it to their desired emissions of the water. Key assumptions in the budget, we want to both fund administration and council priorities. We're trying to make sure that there's a, there are a lot of needs in the city, a lot of things we're trying to address. We'd like to make sure that we're funding all of them in some reasonable manner. Clearly some have larger components to them than others. Some just simply require more money on part of the street versus we're talking about suddenly fix up. We certainly want a balanced budget for the general fund. It's extremely important for our credit rating and how reviewed within the investment provision, we need to borrow additional funds that we do a balanced general fund with removing within our budget. Most of the, any deficit spending that we're doing is really in the way of capital. We're investing in hard assets, vehicles, buildings. We certainly want to continue that investment, the infrastructure, quality of life, talked about smart streets, parks or downtown. Additionally, we want to leverage technology, talked about that with some specific examples. We certainly want to fully fund our public safety personnel, all fire and police personnel as it's been negotiated, they're all fully funded within our budget. And then finally, a note that we do want to focus on efficiency with no increase in city full-time personnel levels. Without growing the top line of our budget, we certainly have a little bit in our means, we're not looking to add on a net basis additional full-time. Fourteen. And we definitely want to recognize the good work that employees are doing. And so we do have a two percent pay increase for the civil city employees in the budget in addition to some of the pay adjustments based on some salary benchmark. We have frozen some salaries in the budget for senior department leaders who have received increases in the last two years. Those are the only increases that we have in the budget. Additionally, we will certainly recognize the increases that have been negotiated or being negotiated for our three marketing units of places, fire and construction. So just going over a couple of the key initiatives, these are really the top five that we listed under investment ready places, which is going to look at economic development jobs as well as smarter streets. And we have in 2014, thirteen million investment ready places and people. The idea that we must make an investment within certain public infrastructure to make it attractive for people to want to do business in South Bend. Additionally, we have eleven point four million for smart streets. That money is being funded out of a number of different special revenue funds, capital funds, to organize these areas. Downtown also focusing on purchase side, money for purchase sidewalks throughout the state. We have API, key performance indicators, and we talk about how do we measure things? Key performance indicators within the economic development group, within the community investment group led by Scott Ford, we have two hundred and ten jobs created in 2013 so far. Six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars of city public investment is launched, over twenty-three million dollars in private investment so far in 2013. Talking about recent wins, labor view, the business in Michawaco Wells Operations Agreement, moving to South Bend, bringing the fifty-five jobs agreement and Michawaco to South Bend and looking to expand in the future. Breakfast business, long time, family business been owned, they've been, they've been in the area twice in time, but they found what they think the perfect property here in South Bend and we're still moving. We're seeing the new restaurants open downtown here in the last few months. London Grill, the Japanese fusion restaurant, others, so we're seeing more restaurant activity. Kirkview is under development as well, right up by O B W. So we must create the kinds of places where people want for good, businesses want to invest. That is the goal behind our initiative, that we're trying to make investment ready places through targeted investment in what we identify as true opportunities. Vacant and bad housing, we've had a lot of discussions about that over the last couple of years. We have doubled the money each of the last two years in the budget, we're doubling it again in 2014. We have two million dollars in the budget for repairing vacant and abandoned houses. In addition to that, we have three hundred thousand dollars in the budget for deconstruction. We believe that should generate twelve jobs. The idea behind a deconstruction of vacant and abandoned housing is that we can offer skills training to people on how to take apart a house, taking apart a house while maybe more expensive, all materials, almost all materials can be recycled. They can be recycled and used again in other building, in other structures. They get green activity, at the same time providing skill in construction and deconstruction. We estimate with this amount, we will, we can generate twelve full-time jobs for a year. We would hope that if we can demonstrate success with this, that we can look at some public-private partnerships and opportunities in which others will be looking to do deconstruction activity and we can generate more jobs. And we believe these could be very much jobs that could be learned by people living in those districts with vacant and abandoned houses. Key performance indicators, through the end of, through the early August, we had forty-five houses repaired, nineteen houses still demolished in the success of the mayor's commitment of a thousand houses in a thousand days. Still a long ways to go. We've been additional, a hundred houses that have recently gone through a bid process, but it's a start, sixty-four houses that have been repaired and demolished here today. So focus of this activity, clearly increasing the value and improving the quality of life in our neighborhood description. Information technology, one of our top five strategies and priorities for the year. We're investing about five million dollars in employees, services and capital for running the infrastructure of the city in 2014. That's comparable to a number that we spent in 2013, but it's more than double where we were four years ago. So it's been significant investment in technology. We're seeing the success of that with our 311 call center and phones, we part of that activity. And what we've done with the phone system, which has allowed us to load data in a lot of people's hands rather than having pieces of paper that one has to go through a hard copy file to find out the information. Key performance indicators that we have are looking at our service calls to our IT group. They've handled over nine thousand five hundred internal calls here today. That's an awful lot of calls. We recognize that that is an opportunity for us to provide additional education and training for our employees and use of technology. We need to do that in order to make sure that they are able to leverage. the tools that are on their desk. But there, that I think council, having learned in the last couple of years, I've used iPads and I think it's amazing the things I've seen that we can do, and I think government here, they're lying. Strategy here, clearly provided, we've put together a efficient technology strategy that is dedicated for in terms of how we make prioritization of the activities that we must do, how do we share resources across the city in a more efficient way and have clarity of what we're trying to deliver. In addition to having hopefully more tools for employees to use, that they don't require a person to give them individual one-on-one instruction, though we can certainly do that, but then we provide hopefully a knowledge base that they can leverage, similar to what we've done in three-one-one. And how quickly our three, our four three-one-one operators have learned about many aspects of the city because of the knowledge base that they themselves actually helped create to answer the frequently asked questions by citizens. Finally, in terms of the top priorities, the customer service, performance management, we talked about three-one-one. We do have additional money in the budget for 2014 to add two and a half more folks to the three-one-one call center. Those are people who are positioned to be transferred from elsewhere in the city, is not a net increase in positions from the city, for us to fund that. The mayor went over some statistics, so I will mention one more in terms of KPI. That six percent of the calls during the first eight months of the year have answered within thirty seconds. Our target is sixty-five percent. Best practice is eighty, eighty percent. So, we've made some staffing adjustments, trying to get that number up. As the mayor noted, our call, our abandoned call rate has decreased fairly dramatically the last two months, and our speed of answering calls has also increased. So, additional staffing that we have, which has simply been utilizing someone in another department to handle three-one-one because we've made it more efficient in that department, that we manage to be that person to help three-one-ones and bring the extra juice as well. So, residents expect and serve exceptional customer service, that is the goal of three-one-one. I think our data demonstrates that we are clearly making progress in service levels and responding to questions and responding to work requests and getting things done. Still a long ways to go. Certainly has highlighted a number of issues and things that we're working on. They're not all solved, still a lot to do, but they certainly help us highlight issues for the departments that we transferred over to three-one-one so far. Organizational structure, the mayor talked about some changes that we're proposing within the 2014 budget. Citizens of South End elect a city council, mayor, city clerk. We're showing that we have an office of the mayor and then various department head or leadership position as community investment, public works, building services, which is combined code and building department, which we'll talk more about. Legal department, administration, finance, parks and recreation, the Pala and Morris, while the Pala and Morris are non-theses, specified department or city ordinance. The work that Ben Zander is doing, Ben Zander Senior is doing at the Morris, he does report directly to the mayor, he does provide regular information on the economic impact of what the Morris is doing. Here's the public safety, fire and police. Talking about building services, we've, we've mentioned earlier that we are looking to combine the building, suits the building and code of parks, so we can provide a higher level of service with more inspectors cross-trained that they can handle both activities.
Not alive, cross-trained followers.
Effective response to the quality issue of small projects, particularly given the seasonality of the business.
It's down there a year.
You have to be more, you have to be more vision. Mean organization, how to structure that, we're professional to city government, we're doing that within the salary ordinance, which we submitted, entitled, and providing additional detail for this week. Talked on that for the first council session as well. Talking about people, we have had a relatively flat workforce the last three years, including the 2014 budget. Looking at full-time personnel, we've had eleven hundred and sixty-four employees in the budget. In 2013, the amended budget, changes at the page, one thousand one hundred and sixty, and in 2014 budget, one thousand one hundred and eighty-six. So, relatively flat. There are some weak positions, there are some traditional positions, a number of those positions are vacant, some are not. We're very much focused on what are we doing to make sure that we give everyone the opportunity to provide those positions we have, as well as other open positions that may occur in the city. Also buying funds, if that is, does not lead to additional employment, that we provide additional funds to provide for a healthier service. We want to spend a minute on property taxes, property tax collection trends. We want to receive the first half payment from 2012 to 2013, and that was for a total of thirty-eight point four billion dollars. You can see from the number that even doubling, we typically in the first half of the year get a larger payment, and then a smaller payment, generally about forty-five percent of the total in the second half, we receive in December. Trying to make folks know, the circuit breaker we started in 2008 has been down, and makes it relatively flat. And council members raised a really important about assessed values, part of those as a moment as to what we see for the future and how that guides our budgeting for 2014, capital within our means, and balanced general fund. So, looking at assessed values, I apologize for a little bit of the pie chart for folks, but on the top line with assessed values, the city's assessed value, that which we profit taxes are charged, has gone from two point seven billion dollars in 2009 to approximately two point four billion in 2013, so it has been down for a current. But we do believe from the twelve thousand, 2012 figures, 2013 estimate, and our forecast for budget 2014, that our assessed value right now are relatively flat, about two point four billion dollars. Challenge that we have is that as long as assessed value, if assessed value is not going up, our property taxes that we, the city receives, will actually continue to decline because of the circuit breaker. Because of the way that math works, we have to get assessed values up, that has to be our goal, that has to be our focus in terms of development and jobs. So, within the budget, we do, we are looking at an estimated tax rate of three point two percent, which is an increase from three point one seven. We will actually get that certified through the state, through the DLGF, the local government finance department of the state in February, when we are asking for council's approval for that national budget. The calculation is that the tax levy is under the state, they each year issue a, what they refer to as a growth quotient, inflation figure, for the year's two point six percent. So, we take that in 2013 estimate, we increase it by two point six percent, as directed by state statute. Because of the circuit breaker, again, without an increase in assessed value, we expect circuit breaker credit, so that's reduced property taxes for, for property owners to increase about, over, about a million dollars year over year. And so, the net tax is also going to be increased by a million dollars. And the collection rate of ninety-five percent, we expect, collection is about forty-six point four million in civil funds in 2014. To note that that's a decline, there will still be a decline of two point four million from last year, because this year we're expecting a decline of about three point four million because of the circuit breaker credit. We talked about that earlier, that we are not, not expecting to see a level of collections that we need from, rather than the level of taxes that we originally thought. So, we've adjusted our budget appropriately, we're moving within our, reaching within our means as we finish up 2013 here. Promises of the second, but last pie chart I give you, and I put this all in line for people of you. What we've done here, we call back, as I said, we have six categories of funds that we have, and there are over ninety different, different funds that are recorded in city council. They must all be kept segregated. We may not move much between them unless we have clear authority, usually under the council approval, from the system state statute. So, for 2014, we have a revenue budget of two hundred and fifty-five, like nine million dollars, because of E P A, about five point three percent from last year. Part of that is a, for in government transfer that we have, in terms of public safety to go, it has been handled, but does reflect some decrease in property taxes as well. So, that's the revenue number. In order earlier, that the general fund is balanced with fifty-five, not quite fifty-five point five million in revenue, and about fifty-five point five million expenditures. Total expenditures for the year are two hundred and ninety-five point three million, budget has been submitted, so it's a deficit of about thirty-nine point four million. The primary, the primary reason of that deficit is the funds that we receive through borrowing, to be used for the long-term control plan under sewer, has about a twenty-six million dollar impact on that. So, those are monies that we borrowed previously, so we've recognized the cash in our accounts, and we're financing them in 2014. So, that would be the expectation. We do for now still have also additional bonds for 2014. Conversation's about. We mentioned earlier, the funds of the project is at operations, we're looking at the balance in the general fund and balance in most of our other accounts. We have some small amount of deficit spending in our code, a small amount of deficit spending in our public safety, we flow it as well, in order to accommodate a fully funding of public safety here, as well as some of our investment in information technology. The other deficits, spends, the native balances we receive where we have sufficient cash, but we are spending more cash accordingly, we're taking in, is reflective of investments and streets and buildings and hard assets. So, this is the expectation from the contract term. And maintenance of city services. That is the capital budget. Focus just that we provide a five-year capital plan consisting of best practices, here in the, in the organization that we work with, the Building and Dance Auction Association here at Nationwide, municipal finance group. Within 2014, about sixty million dollars in capital, the vast majority of that isn't the waste, waste of our systems for long-term control plan spending. Additionally, we have some large investments in land improvements, also related to infrastructure, apartment parcel of long-term control plan, and we also have a large number of vehicle purchases. This is maintain our fleet, we've had a consistent program the last two years of giving the useful life of many of our vehicles at five years, given the police vehicles. We are replacing about thirty-eight vehicles in the budget, two thousand fourteen police vehicles. We also are continuing, we have the fire department to purchase some, some fire trucks, and we expect to have continued one more building, one more fire department building, as we talked about previously, also in question. Apologize for my keepers here. So, final thoughts, again, talk about your overall city budgets, there's been ninety-five million dollars of spending, that's about thirty-nine million. I've mentioned that shortfall primarily due to our wastewater, our dry sewer, for long-term control plan activity. The general fund is budgeted, although the general fund is in balance at fifty-five point five million. The city budget reflects investing our city infrastructure to create investment ready places, improving our neighborhoods, particularly folks in vacant abandoned housing and jobs as our deconstruction effort. Leveraging technology, responding more effectively to people, citizens' requests, questions, need for work, and measuring our performance. That would be our, council's future of the budget.
We'll now move to the portion where the council can ask a petition or any questions regarding the presentation. As Mr. Neal had made mention, I think we've had nine budget meetings, some of this information we've seen previously. So, again, I'm going to go straight down the line, I'm going to start with council member Furlik, any questions? Okay, council member Oliver Davis.
Next, Dave.
Council member Farnes.
There were three bills, Brett, before you made this presentation, and a lot of ways, the presentation tries to explain what's, and included in these three bills, and we act on these every year, in a similar fashion. I would encourage everyone to, because this is a lot of information to absorb on any circumstance. We now have this information available on our website, which is a huge step forward for us, and it's there in an organized fashion, and I believe it includes the presentations that were made to each of the committee meetings.
Yes, all presentations.
So, what you can get is a very basic, generic form, which we're, it's a made-for-public presentation, and you can follow up with them all the detail in a very, very organized fashion. So, this is a huge step forward for folks who are interested, that want to be able to see the basics and then get to the specifics. It's on the website, it's a very detailed form. I've had, the best questions come from the best research, so I would like to be able to answer those for you, and would be willing to do so, I think, when I'm confronted with them. So, thank you.
Council member.
Thank you, thank you. You officially have a ticket for the mayor, correct? Okay, I just wanted to make sure with a few things. On the difference between the administration priorities and the council priorities, are those listed in order of importance, one through ten, or are they just general? We have, we have, all the priorities are important, and we certainly felt that the council, that all of your priorities were, were important as well, we tried to categorize them. I would say that the case administration, yes, we have prioritized them in, in most critical, still very critical. Right. Yeah, because they, there are large similarities, but they're not all aligned, but basically economic development's the only one that we all just agree on, and the others are all...
Yes.
Just a, it's okay. And then in addition to that, what Dr. Viner said, there'll be another meeting tomorrow to talk about the police, what, four o'clock, I believe, is that correct? And then there'll be one next Monday?
A week from Monday.
A week from, yeah. And then another one on that Wednesday, so for people wanting to know some more information like Dr. Viner said, and totally all that stuff is on the website. I've got other questions for the other players.
Council member Furlik.
No questions, thank you, Mike.
Councilor Mache.
Thank you, Chairwoman White. Mark, for both my benefit and the residents' benefit, I just want to repeat what we had discussed in committee earlier today, in the slide presentation you just shared with us, with the 2014 proposed budget assessed value and income projections, where you mentioned the proposed tax rate of three point two percent for 2014. I appreciate very much you providing clarity, I'm going to provide the same clarity to the folks in the audience. Just so you all know, Controller Neal, of course, just presented that the projected tax rate for 2014, although it would be three point two percent, the circuit breaker tax caps will prevail, so in terms of the actual amount that you would be paying on your residential property, your home, it will remain the one percent that the, the property tax caps put into effect. So, this was a question that I had raised earlier in committee. For those of you that maybe saw that number and had some concerns, I just want to reassure you that unless your assessed value increases, your, your residential property tax will not increase based on the numbers that Controller Neal just presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Davis.
Thank you. You know, I'm still trying to figure out how you come up with two hundred and ten jobs created, but we're going to have to probably do that on another day, because I just really want to know how the math comes to two ten, and, because I've stayed here and I, and I trying to quantify everything that we've gone through, even with the tax abatements and new employees moving to the area, and how do we get to the level of two ten? And I know some folks come in and they said they're going to project X amount of jobs for the next ten years. I don't know if they're using the top number once they get to that level, or you're using the baseline, the number that they come with, you know, already employed. But we'll talk about that a later date, because I don't get that one.
I can help you with that.
But that's fine, I want to go somewhere else with it, because I don't monopolize anyone's else's time. One thing I want, I still, I'm sorry, mayor, give me one second. One thing I do want to do is make sure, I'm interested in finding out the historic collection rate for taxes. I saw that we were at ninety-five percent projected, I've never seen it that high. And so, the average being what it is, and that being above the average, given the unemployment rate again, how do we suggest, or how do we think that we're going to get a ninety-five percent collection rate? It doesn't really match up with what's already out there.
Sure, please. So, you're right, I would say we've had collection rates up ninety-five percent, we certainly had lower collection rates as well, particularly during the most difficult, you know, times in 2008, 2009.
Right.
So, that collection rate has varied, but...
Do you have the average, do you know what the average has been over the last two years?
So, you can just see, it's run anywhere from eighty-nine point seven, as you see there, ninety-two, three, ninety-two, three, ninety-three, eight. It's been on an uptick as the economy has begun, has begun to turn. So, ninety-five percent is the number that we're using. Might turn a little bit aggressive, but we think from what we've heard, that we're, it's not an unreasonable amount. But we certainly are trying to be conservative, at least reasonably conservative as we project this, because fully, this number is forty-six point four million, so it drives how big the budget can be.
Yeah, it does. As a matter of fact, it's just, it's just the baseline, it's just the ceiling, and so, I just don't know how to look at eighty-nine to ninety-five, and with the economy here locally wavering, and it's hanging on the street, I just don't know how to get there, but again, we'll talk about that a later date. Obviously, this is not the day we're going to pass this. But thank you for your presentation, we really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Council member Tinslaw.
No questions, Chairperson White.
Thank you. At this point, we'd like to thank Mr. Neal, the administration, for the presentation, and as council members have indicated, all the information is available on our website, and we would... and we would encourage you to come to the committee meetings as well, because they're open to the public. We'll now move to the public portion. This is the time that anyone that's present who wish to speak in support of Bill 44-13, 45-13, or 46-13. Anyone present wishing to speak in support of these three bills? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition?
Jesse Davis, P.O., Bucks, Kent, South Bend, Indiana. We heard Mayor Kamakka, and he's mentioned it on several occasions, and now his stand-in Mayor, Mr. Neal, keeps stressing the fact that we need to get assessed values up higher. When as a citizen, a business owner, and also a person who owns several properties in South Bend, St. Joe County, I don't think my assessments need to go any higher. I've got houses that are assessed at $78,000 that I couldn't sell on the market tomorrow for $50,000 in this economy. So I don't understand, you know, we get a property tax cap from the state, from our governor, and St. Joe County and South Bend and Mishawaka says, oh my God, we've got these bonds out there, so you guys get a reprieve on that property tax cap for X amount of years. We paid more taxes than anybody in the state. And you created new taxes, the lower tax, the public safety tax, and then you raised the lower tax. We also got hit with the sales tax, and we've got ridiculous unemployment rates. And yet you're saying, increase my assessed value, so I've got to pay you more taxes to make up for those caps that were supposed to benefit us. So now you want to take that benefit away by jacking those assessments up. That's not right.
Thank you.
President Greg Brown, 1238 Dunn. I agree totally with Jesse about this assessment rate. You get tax abatements, call companies in here, and you hear Mark Neal speak, good presentation, but it's a lot of unanswered things. If you guys were to vote this budget in, is that going to guarantee more police officers on the streets? Is it going to guarantee that our work gets done here? Being a contractor, former contractor, I wasn't able to work in Michigan City, because every dollar made there, they wanted 50% of it spent back in their city. But we have these companies that come in our city. When are we going to start doing things in our city to let other cities stay out to take our unemployment rate down? We have people come in tearing down houses, doing different jobs here in our city, but to turn around and assess things like that strip bar that was assessed at $26,000, and he ended up getting $350,000, we need to draw this back out and pull it back and look at it again.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? We ask that you come to the podium at this time. State your name and address, please.
My name is Alvin West. I live in South 46 Kaylee. I just counsel a couple weeks ago, and I got this letter back from them telling me that they referred us to the COE department. But it seemed like they gave me the...
Excuse me, this is to the budget?
No.
Your call.
To the Atlantic Hill House.
Okay. I'm going to ask that you come back on the field, reach the floor, and share those concerns, so that we can make sure that you can get your question answered.
Well, we had a dress issue, I thought they got a break.
Okay. But only you'll be able to have those questions addressed. Anyone present wishing to speak on the three bills that is before us? In opposition, seeing no one, we'll ask Mr. Neal to come back for rebuttal in regards to the questions in terms of assessed value. To the mayor.
Just want to hop in and briefly correct what might be a misunderstanding about what we mean when we talk about improving assessed value. We don't mean that assessed value ought to be increased by taking the same properties that are worth the same and increasing the assessment. What we mean is that assessed value will increase because we grow the economy. That's the goal. That's the point of all of the economic measures that we have introduced in this budget. This is not a commentary on how the assessment of value, which happens in the county anyway, is done. Our only interest in the performance of the office and the county assessor, of course, is if those assessments be accurate. When we say that we want assessed value to grow, or I should say need assessed value to grow, what we mean is that we need to have increasingly valuable products that add to equity for homeowners and business owners, and would also eventually presumably add to the tax revenue associated with them. So I just want to be sure that we nip at the butt any confusion over what we mean when we say that the best way for us to grow our ability to meet the needs of residents is not by trying to find some way to increase taxes since they're capped already, but rather to increase the value in our economy, because that revenue is growing.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask our attorney, our council attorney, to read in regards to the motion that will pertain to these three bills. We have completed our public hearing portions, and so attorney...
The proper motion at this time, if there are any further questions for the council, would be to continue in the council portion of the public hearing in Bill numbers 44-13, 45-13, and 46-13 until October 14.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, may I hear your vote? If those oppose, the motion carries. These three bills will be continued until October 14. Mr. Furlic, would you please give a second reading to Bill 47-13, please?
Public hearing on Bill and County Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana appropriating a topic and approving the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation 2014 budget and levying the tax and chasing the rate of taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to fund the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation, South Bend, Indiana for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2014.
The personnel and finance head of committee meeting on Bill 47-13, and I think we sent this with favorable recommendation. Do we have a presenter? Present. Again, we ask that you state your name and your address, and give us a brief summary of the bill that is before us.
Good evening. David King, General Manager, South Bend Public Transportation Corporation, Board of Health and Security, South Bend. A quick overview, we talked about several other meetings, the 2014 transport budget. Just a real quick theoretical answer to the budget. Transport operating budget is balanced for 2014. We're maintaining the 2013 service levels, there'll be no adjustments there, as well as no adjustments with passenger fares as well. So real quick overview of all of our expenses. About 52% of our budget, those are operating expenses, our special wages, drop-down benefits, and the fuel expenses round out the top three of our expenses at 11%. You can see our operating expenses is still well under where it was several years ago. We're operating more efficiently, still maintain the same number of employees, and still maintain the same level of service on the streets to the citizens of South Bend and Mishawaka. See our labor expense, how that's trusted over time, which is where we expect to go in 2014, as well as our health and dental insurance. And one of our most volatile expenses are, one that is a huge job for our nonprofit is fuel. We've done a good job with managing that expense, contracting fuel, trying to lock into, buy at the least expensive prices possible. Our revenue sources are still remaining the same. Want to find out that passenger fares only account for about 60% of what the dollars that are actually spent by transport. As far as our passenger revenue goes, we do expect an increase in that, but that number is going up, it just kind of falls in line with where our ridership numbers have gone up. We had about a 5% increase in ridership last year, so we're taking that number again as we move forward and make our 2014 assumptions. Property tax assistance, you can see that number fell dramatically in 2009 with the top seat tax cap that was put on, and we are, and that number has been targeted actually by the deal, if you have it correctly, by Transport of the Authority. Our state operating assistance, PMTF, we do anticipate seeing a $300,000 decrease in that coming next year. But again, with being more efficient, finding ways to generate additional revenue, we don't expect that to be an issue for us. Our federal operating assistance, Transport, draws about $2.1 million in federal operating assistance, and that is what has really helped us to play a role in balancing this 2014 budget. Some of our challenges for 2014 and the year ahead, purchasing new revenue service vehicles, Transport has not purchased any vehicles until over 12 years, so we're looking forward to bringing vehicles coming in sometime late next year. How we're going to address our state-level funding of PMTF directly, controlling our expenses to, again, live within our means, and then how we're going to address our labor contract that expires mid to late 2014. Our 2014 priorities, implementation of a dedicated bus stop project, maintain and expand our service opportunities with local universities and educational organizations, and again, to address our aging bus fleet, but most importantly, to make sure that the higher costs associated with maintaining one of the oldest things in the state as far as Transport goes, and then coming up with the dollars to match on our local shared capital projects. And we have to...
Councilmembers, you have any questions? I'm going to start with Councilmember Scott.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Davis.
No, thank you.
Shea. Councilmember Furlic. Councilmember Dieter.
Negative.
Councilmember Varnas.
No questions, gentlemen.
Councilmember Oliver Davis.
Appreciate your alert.
Councilmember Furlic. Okay, I have no questions as well. We'll now move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak in support of Bill 47-13? Anyone present wishing to speak in support of this bill? Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Do pass if you come and state your name and address, please.
President Greg Brown, 1238 Dunn. I have one question. I heard you say that they're maintaining the same level, that they've been maintaining. I can't see how they cut the bus route. How can it be the same level? Things can't be the same if you change. The seniors that live out on the deep west side that had the bus coming, and a lot of seniors that catch the bus at the corner of Washington and Walnut, the bus doesn't come through there. I mean, the youth minister is working with the kids that take the bus to go to Career Academy. When this weather gets, at the high chill, they're not going to walk down to Western to get on the bus. Not going to walk, the seniors are not going to walk from the port down to Lincoln Way to get on the bus. So how can we be at the same level? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing portion is now closed. We'll ask representatives from Transport to come and to respond to the question in regards to the route that was cut and the impact that it has had.
Sure, and we appreciate those comments. Anytime that service is cut, we know that there's going to be folks affected. Ultimately, we have to make sure that we're the best stewards of tax payer dollars. And the specific route that the gentleman was referring to was a route that was very, had very low ridership, and was not for the most productive of the system. And as we see our dollars, basically our tax dollars, continue to decrease over time, our PMTF dollars, our property tax dollars, we have to make sure that we're using the dollars that we have the most effectively. And while we did eliminate one whole route, we had to cut a bit of additional service to make up for that lost route. So there really wasn't a route to save lives. We realigned our services to make sure that we were operating as efficiently as possible. And with that being said, ridership last year was up 5.26%. So that's a great number to see, while we did cut almost a million dollars out of our operating budget. So that just goes to show that we're enforcing active legal spending, we identified it, and we found ways to be more efficient with using the tax payer dollars.
At this point, we'll bring it back to the council portion. I'm going to ask our council attorney to read the motion regarding this bill.
Yes, this bill would not go back to committee since we've made our presentation. The appropriate motion would be to continue in the council portion of the public hearing on Bill number 47-13 until October 14.
So moved and seconded.
All those in favor of the motion, may I hear your vote? Those oppose, the motion carries.
I have to make the motion continue 49-13 to 10-14.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, may I hear your vote? Those oppose, the motion carries. Now I entertain a motion to rise in the committee of the halls.
So moved and seconded.
All those in favor? Those oppose, the motion carries.
Thank you. The council is now in session. For Furlic, let's proceed with resolutions. We have a motion to continue.
I have actually made the motion to continue 13-56 to 10-14, 2013.
Set.
After request of the petitioner.
We have a motion to second on that. Any opposition? Thank you. For Furlic, let's keep going here. 13-57.
A resolution of the County Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana approving a petition of the Department of Water and Sewerage for the property located at 722 South Franklin Street.
Thank you. Committee reporter.
Dr. Foby Z and A, next, Dave, in terms of favor over the spot.
Mr. Williams.
I'm Mark White, the O.S., 115 South Lafayette Boulevard. This is the public hearing at the end, August 7, 2013, major league area board of the Southern Steel, but despite the sudden cuts, well, 37th Allied Industrial District, talking with a 5-1 favorable recommendation. My understanding is to try to have them out with the neighbors and try to resolve some of the issues, and we bring in points and recommendations to help resolve some of those issues, everything they have.
Great, thank you. Always a timely report, sir. Now I'd like our council attorney to give a brief overview of the rules we will be working under.
I'd like for the... First, the committee recommended that the bill be amended section four with Rita Fowles. Approval is subject to the petitioner, confined with the reasonable conditions established by the area board of zoning appeals, which are filed in the office of the city clerk, and is also subject to written commitments filed in the office of the city clerk at their duty as... With regard to the rules, anyone in the public has the right to speak before the council. If you would, those wishing to speak in favor, get your name and address, and then we have a total of five minutes to present your case. That time will be totaled up immediately after the following... Of course, there's a formal request there, and it's not time. After all individuals have spoken in favor, we will then ask anyone that wishes to speak in opposition or wants to intensify, to also get your name and address, get a brief statement as far as why you are seeking to speak in opposition. That total time will equal the amount of time that the people spoke in favor, or 30 minutes, whichever is greater. Immediately after that comes the time of the oral presentation, the individuals that gave that will have a five-minute...
Thank you very much. Now we may have the presentation.
Patrick Nowak, 6016, Southern Place, South Bend. I'm a funeral director with the Zohring Funeral Home. My grandfather founded this funeral home in 1924, and has been a pillar in this community since. In my 25 years as a funeral director, we've seen quite a bit of change in disposition of human remains. At the time I started, cremation rates here in northern Indiana were under 10%. Currently, they're over 40%. Because of that reason, we would like to expand our business and open a crematory. The crematory that we wish to open will not be open to the public. It will be open only to licensed funeral directors and licensed funeral homes. We anticipating of doing approximately 150 cremations per year at this facility. We had the opportunity to meet with some of our neighbors and listen to their concerns. There were three major concerns that they brought to our attention. First was visibility, second was emissions, and third was property values. As far as visibility, the facility that we wish to use will be able to be used as the vehicles coming in to the facility, unloading the human remains in this closed area, and then exiting. No one will be able to see human remains. We also went forward with a commitment to install a privacy fence along the east alleyway there to block any view that way. As far as emissions, odor and smoke... As far as emissions, odor and smoke, there was a segment done by one of the local newscasts that I forwarded to our council members. They visited two local crematories that are situated in neighborhoods here in South Bend. During that segment, the people, the neighbors that they interviewed were all positive. Some even said they were not aware that there was a crematory there. Also taking account that these funeral homes, these cremation units at these facilities are older units, ten, fifteen years old, we are planning on putting a state of the art, brand new facility, brand new crematory in, which will be better in standards, better in emissions. I also received letters from area businesses that I forwarded to you. Businesses right across, and they basically said the same thing. They've never had any problems with these crematories, with these funeral homes. Lastly, I went ahead and forwarded petitions by the people who are here this evening in support of this. We also checked with realtors and appraisers as far as their concerns with property values, and they came back with the same, the same answer to us. They couldn't pinpoint that a crematory in somebody's backyard in somebody's vicinity would directly increase, decrease property values in any particular way. However. I thank you, I thank you this evening for letting me talk with you and the neighbors for their concerns. If there are any questions, I'll be pleased to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes.
All right. Start with Councilmember White.
If I could just. Here's one from my house. Oh, this is her. I said to her. They don't have my stuff. They approved the property.
And what would be that email about you?
I said, but I know what I'm thinking. I know what I'm thinking.
I would like to thank petitioner, their willingness to meet with the neighbors. We felt that that was very important and to try to reach some type of agreement and/or compromise in regards to those three areas. As I look forward to hearing from the public this afternoon or this evening.
Yeah, thanks for meeting with the neighbors and thank you for the brief comments as well.
Thank you.
Could you clarify, in terms of the location, will there be sign outside? Will people be able to, if pass by, say this is the crematory, and those kind of things? Could you just talk about your signage?
There will be no signage. If somebody drove by on the street, it's just going to be a painted white brick building. They would not know what it's used for.
And what is currently inside of that building at this current time?
It's just used as a garage area.
Thank you. Dr. Roderick, no questions. The other Dr. Furley.
I'll echo Councilwoman White's sentiments. I thank you for the time and attention that you've put into communicating very clearly with both the council as well as the residents of the community. So thank you.
Ms. Davis. Councilmember Tim Scott.
I concur with Valerie Shay.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for the work and meeting with the neighbors and giving us the opportunity to come out there and look. Now, at this point, anyone that would like to speak in favor? Would like to come up to the podium, so one person starts if anybody else wants everybody else to come up. If you would, for the, just to save the same time, everybody else that wants to speak in favor, at this time, please form a line, so we can get on with that.
Fifty-six twenty-seven Danbury Drive, South Bend, four six one four. Aaron Nowak. Especially after what the controller said earlier today, I believe that expanding business is a great thing, and it's just another way for us to bring in more tax revenues for the city, especially with the business. And when you have a more centralized location such as this, you're going to be able to bring in more, more business, more people from the area, and we keep the money inside it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Justice Davis, P.O. Box, County Code five, South Bend, Indiana. I actually went online and looked at all the information that was online, that talked about the emissions and so on and so forth. And I think this is a great idea. I lost a brother who was a year older than me and was on disability, had no insurance, no way to pay for the funeral, and funeral costs would have been in the, you know, seven to ten thousand dollar range. Pick out my brother buried, and I couldn't afford to do that, neither could any other family members. So we actually had to go with cremation, and the cost efficiency of taking care of a loved one that way and not having the burden of the funeral cost was an enormous savings of probably seven thousand dollars out of a ten thousand dollar bill. I think with visitation and everything, I think I spent less than two thousand dollars to, you know, send my brother off in a proper way.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in favor?
My name is March Dugess. I live in nineteen fourteen, South Catalpa, and I am definitely for, for having the crematory. I also work for, well, I play the organ and play the piano for the funeral home and for funerals around here. The problems that the opposing side seems to have are the emissions, the small, I think the health, or seeing, I'm concerned about the children seeing bodies running around or something like that. I used to parents would just explain that to their children or something like that, you know, and I still live on the same end of town. I was born there on Kendall Street, and I'm still on Catalpa, and I love it, and I was never moved. And I'd rather have, right now, if I was back, I'd rather have a crew right next to me in the house that lives there, you know, that. So that's the way I feel, I really do. I don't see, I think I've driven by there, I see the building, it's going to be a nice building, he's a wonderful young man, and I, I'm all for him. And my children are also for him, but they don't live right there in the area, so they've signed their names, but they all go to Our Lady of Hungary Church, so they're all, they're all for it. That's not all I can say. Is that enough? Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak in favor?
Matt Conroy, nine sixteen, Los Montes Place, Mishawaka. I'm a local funeral director here in St. Joseph's County. We do not have a crematory in Mishawaka. I think this is a needed thing, and very admirable what that is going to do, and I would be one of the funeral directors playing up.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in favor?
My name is Roseanne Smores, and I live at twenty-one twenty, South Catalpa, and I'm just two blocks away from the funeral home itself. The property value in our area has gone down because of rental properties and the renters that do not keep up the property and the abandoned homes that the cities have not taken care of. Crematorium is not going to lower that property value. And as far as the Nowak family goes, the little personal thing here, we're going to treat everybody with respect, and I respect them.
Right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else in favor at this time? I see none. Anyone like to speak in opposition? There we go.
I'm Heather Salsa, eighteen seventeen, South William Street. I've basically set up a building that they are trying to put in. I just have a few things to say today, and this is, I lived in this neighborhood for six years. I moved in this area to be closer to my family. The people that are in favor for this do not live fifty feet from the back of the building or a hundred fifty feet from my front yard. And in opposing to teaching my children, I just don't want my children to see it. And how can it be enclosed if there are two or three other businesses that actually use that lot? Or there's like a joy dump, like there's a siding place using it to store their stuff. So then opening and closing, how are they not to see the purses or vans or whatever be going in? The children in the area already know what's going on because of the foot we put forward to teach our children and stand up on what you believe in. I'm really nervous, so excuse me. Another thing I wanted to point out was, they can't guarantee there's no emissions. They can't guarantee there's no smell. I've actually gone to one of the funeral homes, they have been talking about this in a certain limit, and that's Bullshire Funeral Home. I drove around the area, I talked to a few of the residents there. Most of those homes are not even owned. I own my homes. There are other people in my neighborhood that own their homes. Those, these are homes that are reowned. They're not multifamily homes. There are some rental properties, but the people that we get in the neighborhood, they take care of those homes. So that for the property value, it's just the getting, what's going to happen if the crematory is put in? How many people are we going to get to come and move into that neighborhood to make it and build it up and make it a better neighborhood? We're doing the best that we can now. We look out for each other. We also, you know, we help each other in the neighborhood. That's where the neighborhood is now. Putting a crematory and installing it in our neighborhood, I just don't feel that's going to be, you know, I understand it comes for the people and for the business, but in this instance, I don't think it's putting a crematory fifty feet from a person's backyard or a hundred fifty feet from my front yard is reasonable. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Terry Frost. I live at eighteen seventeen, South William. Like in our public meeting we had, they said they cannot guarantee there will be no odor released into the emissions, especially when it becomes a person of two hundred pounds or more. I believe the gentleman says that at a hundred eighty pounds per emission, so, you know, people are larger than a hundred eighty pounds. For simple fact, I just don't believe this process should be done near homes or people's residence. It may not affect the actual value of your home, but if I don't want to live next to a crematorium, and if you don't want to live next to a crematorium, who's going to buy my house? You know, and I also believe the city has other agendas on why they want that crematorium there. When they do want to advance ignition parts, when they want to come in and buy our homes, you know, the property values are going to be lower, and I just don't understand how you would justify putting that pet post of people's homes. I mean, it's burning dead people. You're not distributing windows or siding. I mean, it's people's backyards. You want to go to your neighbor's cookout on a Saturday and they're burning a body in his building? You want to eat that food that was coming off that roof? Just too close. And all these people that are here don't even live within two blocks from it.
Excuse me, sir. You're coming from the council.
People that have come up there to talk, they're more than three or four blocks away from this. They don't have to drive by it on a daily basis like we do. I live on the west side of William Street, so for us to park on the proper side of the road, we have to go down Franklin and up William. So we have to pass by this facility every day that we leave our house. So, you know, with that, I just ask you to think of yourself, and if you would want to subject your children or your grandchildren to this process in their backyard. Thank you.
Right, thank you, sir.
Hello. My name is Vince Campbell, and I live at twenty-two oh three, South Franklin. And I believe I sent you guys a copy of what I'm going to read. But just to say that I've been living on Franklin Street for almost twenty-nine years, and I would just like to keep on living there for decades to come. And just the thought of what my, and what could happen down the street from me makes just make my stomach sick. I truly believe that no sane human being would want this kind of facility to open down the street from where they live, where they walk, drive, eat, sleep, and relax in their front yards, and especially far worse, right behind their backyard. Since Zoran has plenty of available space next to his current location and big enough garages that he could add this contraption and that location, I believe this sort of practice should happen and be expected to happen at a funeral home. During the recent meeting at Zoran Funeral Home, I was really shocked that people were in favor for this facility to open in our neighborhood. The more I looked around, the more I realized that all these people were parishioners of Our Lady of Hungary. Since none of them even lived directly near the location, many of which live on the other side of home village, and one person actually lives all the way in Mishawaka near Green Highway. They, the parishioners, are only in support of this facility because eventually Zoran monopolizes the industry in northern Indiana, its profit will skyrocket, and not to mention that he will have the opportunity to run down other family-owned funeral homes in the area. But as Zoran profits increase, he will donate more charitable contribution to Our Lady of Hungary Church in an attempt to decrease this tax liability. Since Zoran is the biggest sponsor of all activities at Our Lady of Hungary, the company has its name plastered all over the parish, all over the calendars, the bulletins, and even on the church huts. Therefore, even though the parishioners do not live in close proximity to this location, they support it because as more, as Zoran burns more, more money, and more money should give that money to Our Lady of Hungary. Just a little bit more information. Average human body can burn in two, three hours. Given that it is possible, given that it is possible to burn about ten laddies in a twenty-four hour period. If you take into consideration the square footage of this facility, it almost incorporates a whole city block. There is ninety-nine, there is a ninety-nine percent possibility that Zoran will not stop with one of them. They have the capacity to add eight, nine, ten, single, double, triple, or ever oven in that facility. Remember that the manufacturer of this equipment is ultimately a salesperson and will say or do anything for a sale. At the funeral home, exactly, it's a one hundred percent guarantee that there will be no smoke or byproducts that will escape the surrounding neighborhood. Manufacturer of this equipment says he performs tests on average human bodies with an average wave of a hundred milliliters. And according to the National Foundation, thirty point eight percent of adults in Indiana are. An article written by James Snapford titled "Crematorium Makes Smoke Triggers Complaints", interviewed James Rayford, quality engineer at the WNC Regional Air Quality Agency, and he stated that the increase in heavy smoke is created by cremating obese bodies. Lady Ford said it's possible that, what?
Sir, you have one minute.
Lady Ford said it's possible that cremating obese bodies, that it can lower the cremation chamber temperature such as creates an increase in smoke. So Zoran produces big people, you know, big people cremation. There's actual evidence, controllers showing smoke, which has videos clips up in the show room. And you can see that there is definitely black smoke. The smoke isn't due to much damage, Texas Roadhouse or a family barbecue. With all due respect, we are talking about dirty dishwater and French vites. We are talking about the systemic burning of human remains. Day in and day out for decades to come. There's actual burning of human flesh, air, nails, bones, teeth, anything that comes to the human body.
Sir, your time is up. Last one. And thank you, your time is up. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
My name is Beacon Edgar Carver. I live at eighteen oh five, South Williams. I was in the process of owning my first home at eighteen oh eight Williams. The whole thought of a crematorium being in the backyard, I understand South Bend is an up and coming, growing community, and our objective is to bring revenue and jobs to the community. And one, this crematorium, they're not bringing jobs to our neighborhood. They got their own people that they're going to face in this place. Second of all, when we attended that meeting, there was a lot of things that was not answered. They could not answer, they would not answer. The biggest thing I have, will we have a snail? It was, they were nothing, nope. They tried to compare it to a McDonald's, a Burger King, or even a diesel truck. No. Definitely stinks. I think it's a bad idea, and I implore you to please hold note to this crematorium being built in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Beth Bab. I live on eighteen sixteen, South William Street, and my vote is no, because I want that behind my building where I live, or I hold no.
Right, thank you, sir. Right, thank you, sir.
Hello, my name's Antonio Campbell, and I live on Franklin, 2203 South Franklin Street. And, uh, it's right, uh, you know, behind my house, not behind, I mean, down the street from where I live. And they're trying to build it, whatever that is, a crematorium. But I've been there all my life on Franklin Street. We never had such a ridiculous thing, you know, crematorium. It's just, the building was operated there being a crematorium. I'll say, okay, build a bigger, whatever. But building a crematorium there, that's a disaster to our neighborhood. Please, I beg you, not to do that. Yeah, 'cause, you know, I own some property there and stuff there, but the people are making that. Every people I talk to, oh geez, you're considering a crematorium? Jeez. What I gotta do, when they, once they go build, build a crematorium, I gotta leave out of there. See, I gotta garden, I build a garden there and everything. I ain't gonna pick a tomato with a crematorium being there with bad, just that stuff like that. It's all good. My little babies, you know, the grandson. Oh, what's that, Ben? Oh, that's a crematorium, that's a dead body going down the street. No, 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 we don't want that. Our neighborhood, please, we don't want that. That's all I gotta say.
Right, thank you, sir. And what else like to speak in opposition?
Uh, my name's Juan de Carver. I live at 1816 South Williams Street. Uh, I'm not a good cremation, so to speak. It is helpful when you're, when you're tackling to come for the burial. But I just, I'm wanting in my backyard, in where I live, it is directly in my backyard and I have all, I like, uh, adopted children. I'm a foster parent for 19 years for St. Joe County. So when I adopted these children, I thought it'd be a nice place for them to live. Crematory idol, Zoran against.
Right, thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, council members. Uh, my name is Joe Scandolore. I live at 2209 Franklin Street. And I'm really against this. It's not that I have anything against them building a crematorium somewhere else, but in our own backyards, our neighborhoods, I think it doesn't fit right. You can always make extra tax money. You can build it in the county or somewhere else, not where there's all our residents and our little kids and our grandkids. Uh, please, I beg you, to have an open mind when you cast your vote. We refer when you send a letter to the going for neighbors right here that affects directly. It just doesn't fit well with our, with our neighborhood. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Brian Fry. I live at 522 Alabama Street in Mishawaka, but I own the property at 1816 South Williams. This proposal is 15 feet from my property. Um, I've owned it for almost 20 years now. My taxes have went up considerably. Um, I don't have a problem with that, except my value has stayed the same. Problem is almost exactly from what it, I bought it four, 20 years ago to today. Um, I just don't think this will help. It's kind of a nest egg for my retirement. Doesn't look good. I wish you would vote no on this. Um, the people that were at the meeting at the funeral home, I'm sorry, my children didn't even live close to us. You know, if something was that far away from me, I wouldn't have even gotten involved. So there's gotta be something else here. That's all I have. Right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Rosa Troplano. I live at 2126 South Franklin Street. And I have collected over 50 signatures from residents in business on Franklin, Mathia, and William Streets and Heather. Another concerned citizen has also collected a similar figure going around her neighborhood. Numerous individuals have also known frustration against a proposable to not sign the petition because they have pending arrangements with Zoran. I will leave you with this. What should we tell our children, grandchildren, nephews, or nieces when they ask in the dead of summer, mommy, daddy, grandpa, or grandma? Why do these people use fireplaces during the summer? If this question was asked to you by a young adult in mind, what would you say? I sincerely hope that this council will give the health of its residents, grow, or high income, society, and the cement of crematory on Franklin Street. Thank you.
I tell my son. Thank you, ma'am. Buddy, this world is cruel.
Okay, yes. My name is Augustine Ovelia. Okay, I've been 1965 over there in the street, right? I don't think it is a good deal to listen to anything in Franklin in the street. They wanted to price Franklin in the street for no bar. Build more listening over there in Franklin Street, price it no bar. You know, so you go do this in Franklin in the street, the price of what down the mall? They got so many kids over there, there's baby kids over there, you know, I build them up for this, I don't think it would, would that deal pull all this thing in Franklin in the street? I don't think it'd be nice over there in Franklin Street. No matter what, people leaving next to the door and people have got a cup of steak or something, you got a smell all of a sudden now, all of this with the kids, I don't think it's a good deal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Not a deal to do this thing over there in Franklin, right?
Anyone else like to speak in opposition at this time?
People come in here, don't be afraid, come in and get a toast.
Thank you, officer. Anybody else in opposition? Speaking of that, petition, we have a five-minute rebuttal.
Just on a couple points that were brought forward as far as feasibility, um, if it was feasible to put on the property at the current location for the funeral home, it would give us more control and I would love to do that. But because of the wood structures that we have there, uh, it isn't feasible to do that. That's one of the reasons we were looking for, excuse me, a brick structure with a, with a metal roof. Um, as far as monopolizing the market, um, I'm actually one of the smallest funeral homes in St. Joseph County. Um, this is actually a matter of survival for me to keep my business going. My son is going to school to come into business. This is an act of survival. More and more people are getting cremated, it's just a fact of life. And this is one of the things I have to do to stay in business. Um, as far as some of the emissions and such, I would just like to ask Kevin Finery from Emissions Systems, who is going to, um, put that unit in for us, if approved, just to address a few of those issues.
Uh, good evening, council. Uh, to adjust the issues you have.
Give your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, Kevin Finery. Uh, company is RML CFS, 15660, Sale Street, South Allen, Illinois. Um, adjusting the council just, and also the public, my participation here is in supply of a, uh, a human crematory rejoin. Uh, I participate in other projects within South Plunge, San Juan High Fire Training Facility that's going on. I am part of that as well. I explain all of the girl room line that goes into that facility. So as a public service, I'm here to in fact inform the board as a customer servant. I am here to support our customer who wants to add cremation. Uh, clearly stated that 70% of that need is requesting, that need, that care is requesting cremation. Uh, this product is in fact a need for funeral to survive. Increasing profits is not fed up against adding cremation, it's decreasing profits. Uh, that, this particular product is being demanded by an increase 50% of population for areas within the country that are 85% of, uh, a demand for cremation. Uh, adding emissions, lack of interpretations and misunderstandings about the, about smoke related to this process. The emissions are in fact monitored, uh, documented through every cremation and provable to meet the US EPA and any local EPA guidelines that are required. The equipment is statedly out, it is the newest equipment available from a design perspective of fuel economy. Uh, it's in fact, uh, low, low fuel usage, therefore it has lower emissions than any other cremation equipment available and anything else within the region there. Um, so, from emission perspective, I have a quick question you might have, but the emissions are not the issue, safety of children, uh, that's also not the issue. Um, issues about businesses surviving, and this is what's required in the death care industry. Funeral homes all over this country, and I'm working with many of them nationwide, that are in fact adding cremation and applications just like this. I, I've installed in funeral homes, not unlike the Zoran Funeral Home, that is 35 feet from an exhaust act is a home, right? Next door in Savannah, Illinois. I've participated in public meetings there, the same concerns were brought up, uh, pretty much my responses were the same at that time. Uh, that's been in the south for over two and a half years. Not one complaint ever been, uh, a record that I have related to it. I support absolutely the free trade and I, I consider it a great.
You have one minute, sir.
I consider it a great service when the council looks at our food business to in fact, as Pat said, survive. This is a part of surviving the business as well. Um, if there's any questions regarding the emissions, I could be more specific on that. I think I've said all I can and supported it.
Thank you, sir. Is that the end of your rebuttal?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Public portion is now over. Turn it over to council, council and the candidates for recommendations here.
Just a reminder that section three of the proposed resolution sets forth before proxess, set forth by a stable.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mr. President, uh, council members, um, as a councilperson who, um, represents this district, I recognize that this is not, that's not an easy, um, situation because you're dealing with all the neighbors that live out in the area. You're not only dealing with the neighbors that live out in the area, you're also dealing with the business. And the role as a councilperson is also to look out for the neighbors and also look out for the businesses within that district too. Um, as I shared in the meeting, um, there are some, in the Rum Village neighborhood history, I've gotten a chance to, I've been out there over 19 years now, and I've gotten a chance to meet with a lot of the neighbors and people, the people who've been up there third and fourth generations. And in the Rum Village neighborhood, we have more bars than any other place, and I stood up for those bars, some of whom would appear in opposition. And, um, some of my colleagues up here well remember when I stood up for the bars. And I believe that smoking and drinking, that's what I think. So my issue to protect your bars was to try and have a grandfather call us, we could get to that at that time, because I was more concerned with those kind of emissions and everything else too. But we stood up for the bars in our district because we have bars, good funeral home. The whole Rum Village area used to be the place where you just stayed in Rum Village. You had just Oliver School, you had your Indiana Avenue. Uh, there was a comment made that this was having something to do with ignition part, without disrespecting, I haven't talked to Mayor Pete about this and, of course, Mayor, um, this has absolutely nothing to do with, uh, that part. This is gonna make me different on my stage, so I'm gonna need us. This is strictly building with a funeral home, trying to grow the business here. And not just any funeral home, it's the funeral home that's taking care of a lot of people in the district. Um, some have said that this is only to help Our Lady of Hungary. And I've been there and I appreciate the members in the parish that are there, running schools, helping out the staff. I am not a member of the Our Lady of Hungary Parish. I don't go to church in the district. And so I kind of, this, my decision is not reflective of, um, the fact that this is to help any type of parish or any type of school in here. This is to look at the neighborhood situation and to look at how we can help a business balance it out. So in the balancing of it out, 'cause I've had to deal with mediations all the time in my life as a counselor. So what do you bring to the desk? Well, they brought to the desk, we will put up a fence. You will put up a fence around it, which they didn't have to, but I, they put a fence around everything else. Then when I put the sign around it, now anybody was gonna tell what's going inside of it, that's your partner. Okay? Now even then, uh, in 2010, I had seven funerals in my family. Seven. I have little kids, okay? And my daughter has lost both grandparents. We were going back and forth to funerals, back and forth to grave sites, back and forth to everything else. Okay, kids, death is a part of life. I'm a single guy. And so I took it with my 13-year-old and said to her at the time, if something happens to daddy, bury me in South Bend. We had a whole conversation with the 13-year-old. How to bury daddy in South Bend since my dear, um, other hospital went out to Mishawaka, take me to Memorial, when something happens, it's right down the street, I have a chance to be there. So one time she said, take daddy to Memorial. She knows about my death plans. I'm a full-bodied donor. We went over all of this stuff to a 13-year-old. Okay? Who was, talked to a 12-year-old, 13-year-old? But her grandparents were right there. So we've had to deal with reality of life with kids. Kids have lost parents. I've had to go to funerals of kids who were five-year-olds and I officiated at kids' funerals. So the idea that kids start to know about self-hurts and death and all that is ludicrous in my opinion, because it's a part of life. Okay? So I want us to really understand that years ago, you had your wake in your own house. They prepared the body, you had the wake in the house, the casket set right there in the house. Okay? And so we have become so far away from death and so far away from it all, that it's, it's always taken the beauty out of death. Okay, if there's anything beautiful about death, but there's something nice about it. And so my thing is this, in the meeting we had, the Zoromans, the, and the funeral home directors, they made the concessions. When I asked the other side, they said we just want to know anything. My concern on that, and I'll take a little time and ask my colleagues, there's two more minutes on this, 'cause this is something we try to do. Some said, well, you need to have, you want over your area? Well, I do, we're close to the death zone area, too. I can walk right over there. There are hot things in our district. And I went around, Dr. Furlock, in your district, you have a crematorium over at Edison. Um, have you got any complaints? No. You, Dr.?
No.
And Tim Scott, our district, five district, um, person in First District, you have two.
Hmm?
And yours, crematories and yours. Uh, are you getting complaints? I just need to know.
I live, I actually live a block and a half from the one. And no, it, been there 20 years, I know people who've been there 40 years who, um, well, funeral homes aren't, you know, discussion is basically their business. And, uh, it is not a concern, it's not brought up to, uh, children, it's not brought up to people buying and selling houses. Our, our value of our homes have not decreased in any way. It's not brought up during comps or looking at homes in any way.
So when I started seeing that, I'm looking around today, um, you work on my husband, I'm playing here and stuff, and we went through, I'm saying, they bought my prices on my cremation and everything else is deep calm, it's open, I deal with. I told him, I wanted me to make you buy the stack, I couldn't, I couldn't flatter him when I went over. You know, it's just deep stuff. Um, the price of burial, the prices of being cremated and where to go. And I've been dealing with similar, I, uh, and given that, I just feel like the six districts was being picked on, on this area was being picked on, in the sense that we have, you have two of them in the, in the First District, um, Councilman Scott, Dr., um, you have another one over your district, we have several of them in the county, they're all in the city, they started to grow all over town. Okay? And I'm talking to different people. Um, I think that's, that's what helped me to see a better picture. If all of this was only targeted for the six district and everything was coming in the six district and it was all us, then I would say, what's going on here? That'd be a small test I'd be concerned about. But the thing about it is this is being spread around the whole area, really around the whole state, really around the whole country. That we're having to come up with the concept of cremation and talk about it, share it with our kids, you know, doesn't mean mama and daddy or cousin is getting burnt and going to hell. Sometimes we think burnt bodies, we think hair fire. Okay? It's, it's not that. There's a lot of churches and a lot of people have issues with that. So I'm just saying to you, tonight, I respect the fact that our business owners have taken the time to hear the neighbors. They hosted them, they heard them, and they've taken the time to work with some of you. Sometimes you said, well, we'll leave with this, doesn't happen.
You won't, no.
I got you. So, um, so I'm just at the point now where I thank you, um, I'm gonna support this. I, I've talked to the neighbors and I'm gonna be voting to support it and ask my colleagues to join in that, that we will support our businesses because they're not only taking the time to promote their business, but they're taking the time to hear the neighbors' concerns.
Say recognition?
Yes. Uh, make a motion.
Second?
Thank you. Thank you.
Third party.
Yes. I appreciate it.
Mr. Scott?
Hi.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Hi.
Mr. Shae?
Hi.
Dr. Furlock?
Hi.
Dr. Martin?
Hi.
Vice President Davis?
Hi.
Councilmember White?
Hi.
Mr. Furlock?
Hi.
Vice President Keith?
Hi.
Nine, on.
Thank you very much.
1363, please. Thank you, sir. Let's go to 1363. A resolution confirming the adoption of a clerk. the annual salary for council members for calendar year 2014.
I would like to move, make a motion at fifty thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public hearing on 10-14-2013.
Motion second all favor.
Aye.
Captain, thank you. Fifty-one thirteen. First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the city clerk for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-one thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Thank you. The motion second all favor.
Aye.
Captain, thank you. Fifty-one thirteen. First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the mayor for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-two thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public hearing on ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-three thirteen. First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the mayor for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-two thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-five thirteen.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the mayor for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-four thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-six thirteen. First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire fighters of the South Bend Fire Department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-six thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public hearing on ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-seven thirteen. First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-seven thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public hearing on ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-six thirteen. First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-six thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public hearing on ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-seven thirteen. First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-seven thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-eight thirteen. First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-seven thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public hearing on ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-nine thirteen.
Thank you, sir.
Let's go first reading of fifty thirteen, please.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the city clerk for calendar year 2014.
I would like to move, make a motion at fifty thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public hearing on ten-14-2013.
Second.
Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-one thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the council members for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-one thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-two thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the mayor for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-two thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public hearing on ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-three thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-two thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public hearing on ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-two thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-two thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-five thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-two thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-three thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-two thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-five thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-two thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-six thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-four thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-seven thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-four thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-eight thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-five thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-seven thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-four thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-eight thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-four thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-seven thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-four thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second.
Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-five thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-five thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-six thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-five thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-seven thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-five thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-six thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-five thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second.
Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-seven thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-six thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public hearing on ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-seven thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-five thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-six thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-six thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-seven thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-six thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-seven thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-seven thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-eight thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-seven thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-eight thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-seven thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-seven thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-seven thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-seven thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-seven thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-eight thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-five thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second.
Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-seven thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-seven thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-eight thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-seven thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-eight thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-seven thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second.
Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-eight thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-seven thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
In the opposition, fifty-eight thirteen.
Aye.
First reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, we are setting the annual salary for the fire department for calendar year 2014.
I'd like to move that bill fifty-seven thirteen of the personnel finance committee for second and third reading public discussion for ten-14-2013.
Second. Motion second all favor.
Aye.
but that's not what he did with Chief Boykin, and that's not what he did with Officer Roberts. Unfortunately, there's an appearance of racism here because Officer Roberts is black, and the chief is black. I don't want to go there. But that's the conditions that we're operating right now. I made the analogy when I was here back in June, that I was in Marine Corps better, and I said at the time that in Marine Corps, if one Marine went outside, faced danger, we all went outside, faced danger. One minute. That's our question. If we didn't go outside, not only would we break a longstanding code with other Marines of protecting and covering each other, we also risk court martial. I think this is a situation because of who we're talking about here, the chief, who's been investigated by the Indiana State Police. I think the findings should be publicized, and I think that based on the mayor's comments about any chief or any manager bringing on investigation, if it is true that the allegations were supported, we need to ensure they've been terminated, so this city can begin healing itself. Thank you very much.
My name is Jake Teshka, forty-one thirty-three, South Bend Street, South Bend. I want to echo Mr. Sims' sentiments, and also thank you of the council for all you guys have done trying for this mayor accountable. Mayor Pete campaigned on transparency, and whether we're talking about the police tape scandal, or questionable hiring, firing decisions, or the constant dodging of public questions to protect high level appointees, I believe that this may indeed be one of the least transparent administrations, at least in the state of Indiana. The mayor, upon seeing that every resident of South Bend was unfit to hire a position such as Chief of Police and Director of Code Enforcement, decided that what this city really needed was guidance from some of his east coast comrades. And now that one of these appointees has been investigated for his supposed negligent conduct, the mayor's going to great lengths, I think, to protect him. It is my understanding that the Indiana State Police, they have finished their investigation into Chief Teetrin, and that they have delivered this report to the mayor's office, and yet the public has not been informed of his findings yet.